All right, we're convening the budget hearing meetings and right now we're going to start off with city planning. I know some people may have seen the schedule prior, but you did have the URA scheduled in the housing opportunity fund schedule first. We're changing it up a little bit. We're going to have city planning right now. And if our budget director, Bill Urbanic, if you could start us off. Oh, let me mention the council people here. We have Councilperson Strasberg on the line. I cannot see.
Yes, we're doing planning first, is that right?
Yeah. See the names. I can't see what's under Grant Irvin, but we also have Councilman Anthony Cogle here.
Four star attendees.
All right, Mr. Urbanic.
Thank you, sir. I'll start off with the Department of Planning's mission. The Department of City Planning establishes and sustains an orderly and consistent approach to land use in the city of Pittsburgh that incorporates sustainability, city design, resilience, equity, and opportunity in its work. To achieve this, city planning works with communities, civic organizations, and public entities to develop policies, projects, and programs at the neighborhood and citywide scale and implements these policies, regulations, public commissions, and review of land development plans, master plans, and projects for compliance with those policies and regulations. The overriding goal is to sustain and enhance the thriving city neighborhoods for the people who live, work, learn, and visit here. The budgetary highlights for the department, I got this number right, sir. Total budget is $3,945,386. It's an increase of $224,437 or 6%. Total full-time positions are 44. That's a decrease of six, plus funding for zoning board members and interns. There's a few salary position changes that I'll move over, including the elimination of three community liaisons. Planning has non-salary subclasses that are increased by $51,000, including tuition reimbursement increased by $19,000. Professional services also increased by $19,000. Funding, a grant for Manchester Historic State Grant. Administrative fees were increased by $6,200. Membership dues for staff, that is. Operational supplies increased by $5,600 and cleaning increased by $1,000. Still $2,100 below the 2020 allocation. City Planning has a few capital projects here. ADA compliance, $100,000. That doubled from last year. Comprehensive plan for $70,000 for a Marshall Shadland Brighton Heights neighborhood plan. Also war memorials and public art, $725,800 for the reinstallation of the Cantini mural that was removed for the I-579 cap. City Planning also has several trust funds, the Stormwater Management Trust Fund, current balance $626,000. Open Space Trust Fund, current balance $91,700. Green Initiatives Trust Fund, the current balance is $3,000. One-stop PGH permitting technology trust fund. That trust fund is shared with PLI, IMP, Domey, and FIRE. There's no balance yet. Trust Fund Legislative was created just this month on November 8th. There's also a lead building trust fund, no balance. It was never implemented. And with that, I'll give it back to the chair.
Thank you, Director. And we also are joined by City Planning and Director Dash, if you could introduce yourself and also your staff can take the opportunity to introduce themselves as well. And I believe you have a presentation?
Oh, we do, yes. Thank you, Councilman. My name is Andrew Dash. I am the Director of the Department of City Planning and joined by...
Hello, my name is Corey Lehman. I'm the Zoning Administrator, Lisa Ray, Chief Clerk.
Thank you.
And Grant Irvin, our Assistant Director of Sustainability and Resilience is on as well, waving to us from Zoom.
All right. Hey, let me know if you have any technical capabilities that you don't have. Some reason right now our... Our screen share is not working, so hold on just one second. Yeah, for some reason it's... All right.
Second time was the charm, I guess. So, you know, as Bill noted, you know, this is, you know, the presentation for the Department of City Planning. Department of City Planning is made up of four divisions. Strategic Planning, Zoning and Development Review, Public Art and Civic Design, and Sustainability and Resilience. I won't repeat our mission as Bill had already stated it, but really our focus is around land use. And, you know, whether that is through development review, or whether that is through plans that we create, or whether that is through, you know, policies and other work that we do with communities, with residents, with other stakeholders, our focus is really around land use and development. That happens through, you know, whether that is through citywide policy, you know, whether that is through neighborhood plans or district level plans, specific regulations in the zoning code or otherwise in the city code, or through implementation through either development review or projects that our divisions work on. That is, you know, the work that city planning does as a part of its normal course of business. As noted, the proposed budget for 2022 has us at 44, you know, positions. The one position that was added to the government, to the department, the climate and energy advisor position, has been a grant-funded position, so it's actually only funded in the budget for six months of 2022, because that is when the grant that we have expires for that position. The total operating budget, like Bill said, 6% increase from 2021. The three capital projects that we have were outlined, which is an increase from our capital projects in 2021. The largest of that being the Cantini Murals Preservation. So this is a project that was through the Section 106, the historic preservation process for the cat project, Frankie Pace Park. It is, you know, an obligation that the city did, you know, did kind of, you know, create for itself when doing that project. And, you know, we did planning for that in 2021 and are ready to go through the reinstallation in 2022. The comprehensive plan, the $70,000 that's going towards the Marshall Shadland Brighton Heights Neighborhood Plan is actually in addition to the capital budget line that we received in 2021, because the project was, you know, was underfunded, and so we needed additional funding to be able to start that work in 2022. And then, you know, as Bill said, we also received, or there was proposed capital budget project for ADA compliance, and that is around the city's obligation to do a transition plan. And so as a part of transition planning activities, which is combined with the Disability Service Facilitator Program, it is for us to understand our obligations and how we're performing relative to the ADA and what our plan is for ensuring compliance. Again, you know, like that 44 number, looking over the last four years, you know, you'll see that, you know, that 44 number is, you know, kind of a decline over, you know, over the years of three positions from the reopener in 2021, but about seven positions, seven and a half positions over the last four years. And although there is an increase in the operating budget in 2022, that is after declines in the operating budget in both 2021 and 2020. So that, you know, over the four, the last four years, the budget number is actually smaller for our operating budget than it was in 2019. Just going through the divisions and some of the highlights, first strategic planning, really the goal of strategic planning, they are our long-range planning arm for the city. They are the ones who are working on neighborhood plans or citywide plans around a number of different topics and are many times the link to the community for the planning and development side of things. But just a couple of items from 2021 from that group. We have, you know, gotten to a draft of the city's housing needs assessment and update for the five-year plan. Have implemented permanent inclusionary zoning in the Lawrenceville neighborhood and, you know, working with Councilwoman Gross around expansion into some additional neighborhoods. One of the things that we also manage is the city's Registered Community Organizations Program, of which we are now up to 41 registered community organizations in all nine city council districts, you know, across the city. A part of that is that we've, that the registered community organizations hold development activities meetings, which the staff assist them with. And so, you know, those are over larger projects that are coming through the development review process, where really the connection is that we want to ensure that some of that process happens in the community with the community. And so we've had, through, you know, the year-to-date, have had 77 development activities meetings across the city. Part of this work is around neighborhood planning as well. So we have completed the work of the visioning studies in Lincoln, Leamington, and East Hills, which we're now reviewing with the communities. We've been working throughout the year on a plan for the Oakland neighborhoods, which there have been a release of strategies and, you know, it's under, you know, we're working to get a draft done for the first quarter of next year. And then as a part of a guide for the future neighborhood plans that we'll see, we did release the city's Neighborhood Plan Guide to be able to guide both the department and communities in moving that work forward. As a part of our role in environmental planning, we did bring to city council just last month, complete overhaul to the Stormwater Code Title 13, which was adopted by the council. Are working on a design manual to implement that right now and then work on park master plans. So we did complete park master plans for Fort Pitt Park in Garfield, for Emerald View Park in Mount Washington in Duquesne Heights, and are presently working on Fowler Park in the North Side and a park plan for the Hill District, which is underway. Also work on citywide planning around the ADA and, you know, are the city's compliance with the Americans for Disabilities Act, as well as, you know, items like the code for the residential parking program, which will be up for discussion this month. Looking to next year with some of the budget items, I mean, there are some of these things that are funded by prior year plans and those I've tried to italicize here. You know, with the, you know, the new administration coming on in the beginning of the year, we will be working to continue the work of the comprehensive planning effort, which is citywide land use planning. In the, the operating budget is part of the continuation of Engage PGH, the city's online engagement platform. And then, you know, as noted on this, on the slide here, we will be winding down and completing the plans in Oakland and the Hill District and beginning plans in Bloomfield under prior year budget and Marshall Shadland Brighton Heights with the proposed budget. That will move into environmental planning, again, completing the work that we're doing right now in Fowler Park in the Hill District. Moving into Westinghouse, Hayes Woods, and Sawmill Run as places that will be moving in 2022 under, under existing budget with the funding that, in the capital budget for the transition plan process that will allow us to begin that project and be able to bring on a consultant. And then housing, looking to continue the expansion of the inclusionary zoning ordinance. Another part after the completion of the housing needs assessment will be us identifying additional resources to try to bring the work of the need, the recommendations of the needs assessment to fruition. Sustainability and resilience is really our division that is dedicated to, you know, to how we change the city to become resilient to, for this, for our city, both internally and externally, to both identify issues that we need to see as far as climate mitigation and then be able to act on those. And so, you know, that happens through a number of things that are up here on the screen, whether that is, you know, more broad items like helping the city achieve the, and, you know, and show progress towards the UN Sustainable Development Goals at the highest level to having us look at energy performance of individual buildings at a much more local level. There's also a lot of work that's around, that's here in this division around finding new ways to be able to work through city operations to meet, again, these resilience goals, these climate goals. So a lot of things happened here in 2021, from the work of the Marshall Plan for Middle America to code amendments for net zero, for dark skies, for energy release of a departmental energy strategy that will, you know, affect how the city looks to meet its energy goals and its climate, and the Climate Action Plan through, through development. And then providing a lot of support to other departments. And, you know, that is a part of that division's role as well and will continue. And so again, from the budget, really this is the continuation of the work that we do around the energy benchmarking tool, which, which does monitor energy usage of commercial buildings here in the city of Pittsburgh. You know, as a part of the release of that Department of Energy strategy, we'll be working to develop a climate and energy committee, you know, to move forward implementation on that, as well as, you know, continuation of some of the work that Grant and his team have done in Sustainability and Resilience around EV charging, healthy homes and others. The Public Art and Civic Design Division, their role is really to staff the Art Commission, which manages new activity that is not standard on city property, as well as managing the city's public art collection. And so, you know, that's their focus. In 2021, the completion of planning for the Cantini Mosec, which is the capital budget request that is in the proposed capital budget, was a big piece of their work this year. Another piece was the Art in Parks Program. So in the five regional parks, we have hired artists to be working with communities in those five regional parks and have, through the Art Commission, brought conceptual designs for artwork in each of those regional parks forward this year. And, you know, we'll look to install those works in 2022, in the beginning of 2022, along with the capital budget project for the Cantini Murals and the recontextualization of those, which will take, although it is a capital budget project in 2022, will take place over 2022 and is intended to be completed in 2023. Yeah, then moving on to zoning and development review, the, you know, the purpose of this division is really compliance with the zoning code, looking at development and permitting as they come in. And so, you know, that can happen through changing, you know, changes that need to take place to the code. That can happen through their role in the administration of our boards and commissions, or it can be just in approving permitting that may not have to go through a boarding commission. And so, you know, really, we did see an increase in activity for zoning and development review. So, you know, about a 21% increase in permit reviews over 2020 that we saw last year. We saw, although we saw a dip in commercial space that was approved in 2021, we did see a significant increase in residential units that were approved across the city. And so, you know, so that permit activity was something that we saw not only in the reviews that we have with the commissions and boards, but also just in the over-the-counter type of reviews, an increase in that activity for our staff. You know, while doing that, we actually have been able to see a reduction in overall review times. So even though there has been an increase in permit activity, it hasn't affected, you know, people's ability to, you know, to be able to get a timely response and timely approval of their permits. One way that we've, that we're trying to continue to make sure that that's able to happen is through, you know, making some amendments to the zoning code. Although there are some that are around, you know, like we talked about some of the work of Grant's team, or we talked about some of the work of the strategic planning team, where it's really around creating zoning code amendments around plans and our zoning and development review team assists in those, at the same time, trying to make, you know, trying to make changes to the code to, to make, you know, to make a better situation for people trying to get a fence approved or making, you know, making some things around setbacks so that fewer applications have to go to the zoning board is really a part of this team's work as well. While they're still working on some of the bigger picture, how do we change the city with, how do we change parking requirements? How do we change, you know, where we allow drive-throughs? How do we change energy and sustainability reviews as a part of development? So kind of looking at the code from all of those different perspectives. We see a lot of that work continuing into 2022. You know, I think that, you know, with the, you know, and I noted it earlier with the completion of the housing needs assessment, there will be a need for more housing-related zoning code amendments as a part of that. You know, working in the transition of us being, going from being completely virtual with our permit reviews to having 412 Boulevard of the Allies open next year. Obviously, there will be a lot of work in being able to get the one-stop counter with our partner departments and further coordinate with our partner departments there. You know, so we know that that's something that we're going to have to do to provide guidance, to continue to provide guidance. I think that one of the things that, you know, it's been kind of, you know, pretty outstanding, just what the change has been as we've moved to an online permitting system. However, both with the counter and with other guidance and things like that, the zoning and development review team and permits licenses inspections and others are working to create, you know, obviously we know that we need to create more guidance to some of the people that may only interact with our permit system, because they need to put a deck, they want to put a deck on the back of their house, or they want to, you know, they want to install, you know, a shed or something else. And so how do we work, how do we create more guidance and better customer service for the people that are looking to do that work as well? So again, a lot of these things that were in our operating budget are really just continuations of existing programs. So whether that's the work of the public engagement software, Engage PGH, the energy and benchmarking software, the love of your block grants. The one thing that is an additional piece in here that Bill had noted was around memberships, just as a piece that, you know, was funded through, you know, was funded through the Green Trust Fund, you know, Green Initiatives Trust Fund before, now has to be incorporated into our operating budget. With that, happy to answer any questions or provide any clarity.
Thank you, Director. And I see we've been joined by Councilman Gross. All right, I am far sighted. I'm looking at this screen. Councilman Lavelle. And President Cal Smith. All right, I'm going to start with the order they, and I saw them. Councilperson Strasberg, do you have any questions for the Director and his team?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Dash and your whole team for being here today. I really appreciate the presentation, which I hope that you can be willing to share with council via email. That'd be incredibly helpful to have those slides available.
Absolutely.
Thank you. First a big question followed by a smaller question. Well, I guess two questions in one. So when we're talking about community engagement, you know, city planning plays a huge role in ensuring that our, you know, sometimes minimal touches with the, you know, interactions with the public are positive, are, you know, that things are getting done in an expeditious manner, that they're efficient. And so much of that happens around either, like, like you're saying, a small deck or a small project that they're working to, you know, add to their property or somewhat more of a contentious development project that's being proposed next door to them or in their neighborhood or a community planning project. And I know that I hear stories of the 90s and the early 2000s when we were really spending more than we had as a city, but at the same time had a city planner for like every neighborhood. That's an exaggeration, but we had many, many, many city planners who could really be there at every single community meeting. And I know that we've shifted to, in this, under this administration, more of a office of community affairs, which was under city planning for, for most, if not all of its time as an office. And we have neighborhood planners that, you know, do, do a tremendous amount of work, but maybe don't attend every community meeting. I guess when you, in your approach to, kind of just philosophically, your approach to community engagement, acknowledging a couple of things. One, we, people don't engage with their communities in the same way anymore. Not everyone who has a stake in the community has the ability or the time or the, or the desire to attend the RCO meetings or the community meetings on a regular basis. Some of them are quite small. Some of them are atrophying quite a bit and people engage in different ways through their email listservs with their blog or online or through social media. And the sort of national, and you don't have to comment on this so much, it's just an observation, the national political polarization, which then trickles down to a polarization around land use at even the micro level, which can make these kind of meetings challenging. And given the, you know, the tremendous amount of work and development that's happening in different parts of the city, in certain districts, maybe more than others. What's your, what's your theory, given this operating budget and what we have now? What's your theory for moving forward and your strategy for moving forward around engaging the community in an effective way? Knowing that maybe, you know, once we have community plans in all 90 neighborhoods, that will be a really good place to be in, but we're not there yet. How do we continue to engage as many people and stakeholders as possible when it comes to not just a community plan, but a, you know, a new development or being able to respond to concern around something that maybe isn't something that the council member has a stake in, but is going to end up in front of the ZBA and there's community concern around that, or whatever the need might be? What's your, what's your strategy for, with this operating budget with the positions that, you know, you're kind of, you kind of have ready to deploy to be able to engage in that sort of way with, with the public?
Sure. So, I mean, the pandemic obviously changed a number of ways in which we engage with the public. And so when, when that happened, we knew that there was a need to continue to engage with the public over the business that we have as a city. And so we created Engage PGH as a response to that. At the same time, I think we understand that there are ways to continually not only improve that as a platform to create a different opportunity for people to engage with us, but also that now we need to, we need to supplement that as, you know, there are more opportunities for in-person engagement or other types of engagement with other techniques. And so back in 2019, into the beginning of 2020, the city through the department created the city's public engagement guide. And in 2021, when there were the revisions to, when the budget was reopened and when some of the positions, you know, gave us an opportunity to shift some of our positions around, we did create a position in the budget that is the public engagement coordinator. And so the intention there was, you know, that although, you know, And so the intention there was, you know, that although, you know, we're not seeing an increase in overall staff, we did want to make sure that we had a staff member that was dedicated to public engagement. And so whether that is, you know, continual work with other departments on the EngagePGH platform and making sure that the city can engage on all sorts of projects, whether that is a planning project that's going on in city planning or a development project that may be going through a commissioner or a board or a mobility improvement that our Department of Mobility Infrastructure are working on, that, you know, we have someone kind of working to think about how the overall coordination of that engagement work occurs in accordance with the, you know, the public engagement guide that was created as well as its implementation with things like EngagePGH. And so, you know, with a dedicated staff member specifically around that issue, you know, really are hoping that that will improve the ability to make sure that we're engaging people at the right level. Because, you know, obviously, making sure that, you know, there, there are some projects where it is primarily informing people that a project is going on to, you know, which can move to us completely co-creating a project with residents. And, you know, and understanding that, you know, we're doing the right types of engagement for the right projects. And that we are attempting to engage people in the right ways that will not only maximize the number of people that we engage, but the quality of feedback that we receive from residents so that it can truly influence projects.
Thank you. I mean, having a public engagement coordinator is great. That's, but that's one person, that's one position. And I understand there are still neighborhood planners. I guess just if you had your druthers, if we had, if we didn't have to worry about falling back into Act 47 and we could spend, you know, borrow and spend as much as we needed to, would you increase the number of not just public engagement coordinator, but city neighborhood planners, trained planners to be able to do this type of work? Or would you, would it be a mix of planners and public engagement experts, mediators, that sort of thing? What kind of, what do you see from your vantage point as being needed and necessary throughout the city?
I think there's a mixture that's needed of neighborhood planners and people that have a specific planning specialization. So that the neighborhood planners can be the ones that are, you know, a little closer to the ground with communities and be able to understand the needs of those communities and then be able to tie back in more of a team environment to planners that are working on specific issues. So whether those are, some of those are planners that we, you know, and with specializations that we already have on staff, such as our environmental planners, you know, some of that could be like the public, you know, having someone who is focused specifically on public engagement. Some of that could be, you know, having someone who's focused on a specific issue like housing. You know, so I, I'd see that long term, that, you know, it would be maybe not necessarily increasing the number of neighborhood planners, but increasing the support that's around them so that, you know, then those, those planners with specializations can then be there with the neighborhood planner after they start to understand the different issues that community may, may have. Because, you know, otherwise, you know, even within the geographies of the city, there are very different issues in neighborhoods that are directly adjacent to one another. And, you know, it, you know, having the expectation that all of our neighborhood planners could be specialized in all of those things, you know, may not be, you know, maybe stretching those positions a little too thin.
Yeah. And it strikes me that, you know, the city can't solve all of our issues. Some of it needs to be communities bootstrapping a little bit, but we also have this community engagement manual, this, this protocol that we follow. A tremendous amount of learned and lived experience and, and also education on staff and just a, just an idea that, you know, it might help with the scaffolding of, and support of these, of these positions, which we, I mean, it would be great to have more available, but we, we don't right now. And that's, you know, that's understandable. To be able to strengthen our RCOs, which we've put a lot of, of power, we've granted a lot of power to right now, to strengthen the RCOs as much as possible to be able to serve in ways that, you know, help to make up for any kind of deficit in community engagement and outreach. And it's just incredibly uneven right now. So to the extent that our community and our public engagement coordinator, our, our planners can help to similar, I see Josette Fitzgibbons from the URA on, on Zoom right now, similar to the way that the URA and Henry Horn-Payet convened business groups, the business organizations, and continue to on either a weekly or a monthly basis to learn from one another and grow and strengthen one another. Could there be a way to do that with our RCO citywide and convene them occasionally to help to learn from one another, build strength? And the more professionalized ones helping the more volunteer-based ones and just evening out a little bit of the experience citywide? Because we, we have so much responsibility put into RCOs, some of which just aren't really as existent as they could be.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I mean, I would agree with you on that. And I think that, you know, obviously there is, you know, going to need to be more capacity to be able to assess. You know, we're now three years into the Registered Community Organization Program. And, you know, I think there are a lot of things that have worked and there are a lot of things that we still need to work on. And so, you know, I think that, you know, that's something that, you know, with, you know, depending on the level of capacity, you know, obviously there are opportunities to, to be able to look at that further.
Thank you. And now my, my small question, which I realize is, is not so small because it's, you know, probably, there's probably many opinions about this. But the ADA, or ADA coordinator, ADA compliance, an additional, or it's doubled from last year, a hundred thousand more dollars. And that's wonderful. It strikes me though that ADA compliance, although a lot of it has to do with city planning, some of it isn't city planning, some of it is more, you know, DOMA related, or some of it is more related to just city policies in general and having people on staff who are able to speak to, you know, we're able to integrate the, you know, mean for accessibility and disabilities rights and all, you know, in all aspects of what we do as a city, not just limited to city planning. Do you have an opinion about whether this, you know, all of our ADA kind of office and positions should be housed, continue to be housed in city planning, or whether they should be housed somewhere else outside of city planning?
I think, you know, we've, we've, we've taken a look at this, you know, at, you know, various points relative to the capacity of the city relative to, to ADA, both compliance and kind of for, and, and forward thinking. I think that if we were in a position where there were multiple staff that were doing that work, it would make sense for, you know, for example, if there was an additional staff, you know, that that would be probably within a mayor's office, you know, or, or something of that nature. But, you know, with some of the work and, you know, whether that's the work that we're talking about with the public engagement coordinator, whether that was work that we're talking about with some of the, you know, work that our sustainability and resilience team do. And there are a number of places where, you know, city planning's role is doing a lot of coordination with other departments. And the, the, you know, the ADA compliance, although, you know, again, you know, there is a lot of that, that, you know, is, you know, maybe managing, you know, managing complaints or requests that get into, that get into other departments. There is a lot of work of that coordinator, both through the City County Task Force on Disabilities, as well as through things like the transition planning exercise and, and activity that we, you know, that, that is our funding for 2022 that are really around, you know, the ADA as a part of the city's equity agenda. And how the, and how in, you know, planning's role around development and, and, you know, public space and the future of the city, how we continue to improve, you know, improve lives for, for, for all, for all in the city. And, you know, the, the, that component of the coordinator's work is, is really important. And, you know, and is, is something that is obviously tied more to the work that's going on elsewhere in the Department of City Planning.
Yeah, thank you. That's the extent of my questions. I just want to thank you, Director, and your whole team. You do a tremendous amount of work for the city. I mean, you're, I don't think most people realize all that is encompassed in city planning and the, the department. And your team is always willing to work overtime, attend meetings, special meetings to answer questions of other areas of specialty. You've just accomplished a tremendous about in the last few years and really want to give hats off to you and your team. So thank you for being here. Thanks for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cogell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and welcome Cory, Lisa, Director Dash, and I believe you said Grant is with us soon.
He is, yes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll be brief. Somebody applies for a building permit, Director. Does that automatically come in front of you as well? I mean, do all building permits you take a look at?
Yeah, sure. If you don't mind, Cory Leven, zoning administrator. So there are certain scopes of work that only require a building permit. There are certain scopes of work that only require a zoning development review permit. And then there are some, I'd say, you know, more than half that, that require both. And it's really sort of making sure that the, the scope of work is first, you know, when the intake specialists at permits, licenses and inspections take in application, they're working with the applicant to make sure that the, the scope of work that's stated is matching what's on the plans, that there's, you know, enough information for us to proceed as informed reviewers, and then we take it from there.
And so is it safe to say, Cory, Cory, that, you know, PLI looks at it from a building aspect? And then when it comes to you, you look at it as what impact it might have in the surrounding area? Is that?
Well, first and foremost, we're looking at it for compliance with the zoning code. What that can entail really depends on what zoning district it's in, what the scale and scope of work is. You know, I mean, the process for review can be significantly different just between two locations in the city of Pittsburgh. If one building is on a hillside and one is on a platted piece of land within a residential zoning district, those might have very different implications and items to review and processes. And also if somebody's coming in just for a fence or a deck, that process is relatively straightforward and quick. And there's not, you know, a public meeting process, that kind of thing. Whereas, you know, a very substantial development may have a lot more review.
Okay, I think I understand. From a PLI perspective, they are looking at making sure that it's done by specs that are set forth. You are looking at it from a lens as to how it's going to impact traffic, how it's going to impact pedestrians, all these other things. Is that correct?
That's correct. You know, primarily zoning is going to be looking at the impacts of that development. The tools that are in the zoning code can range from setbacks to say, you know, this, this is the distance from the neighbor's property or from the street heights, but we can get into substantially.
Okay, no, no, I appreciate you making that clear. The other thing was, I'm always surprised to see the planning department in on art installations and the effects that they may or may not have for a community. I had one in particular, war monuments up in Beachview where the whole neighborhood was like in agreement with it. But the planning department kind of didn't think it was done in good taste, I guess, or something of that nature. I guess my question is, you know, do we have like trained, we have artisans on the planning commission to have an eye as to what may or may not work in a space? Or how do we, how do we look at that?
Yeah, so the specific, the specific instance that you're talking about is actually the Art Commission that, that reviews that. And we, you know, the Department of City Planning serves as staff to the Art Commission. So we have two staff in our Public Art and Civic Design group that are working on, you know, working with artists, you know, and to commission new art in the city of Pittsburgh. And, you know, they're also serving a staff to the Art Commission. So whether it's us working to commission new art in the city of Pittsburgh, they still have to go to the Art Commission, which is like many of our boards and commissions appointed by, you know, appointed by the mayor. They are, you know, put into place by a city, you know, by a city council. But in the Art Commission's, you know, they, they have requirements. So they do have artists that are on there, they do have architects that are on there, they do have community members that are, that are on the Art Commission. And they're the ones who are, you know, who, who are reviewing, you know, reviewing basically whether it's a piece of public art or even if it may be a community that wants to do, you know, a plaza or something that may not be a standard design. That those, those items all get reviewed by the city's Art Commission, which again, you know, Sarah Minert and Tony Cavallini are our two staff. They're the ones who, who, who are the staff support to the, to the, to the Art Commission. The same as some members of Cory's team in zoning and development review are staff to our planning commission, who, you know, again, you know, similarly are independently appointed by the mayor and approved by city council. You know, and, and we provide, you know, we provide the, the information. We're the ones who take in the applications in those cases. You know, we're the ones that work with applicants to be able to present the materials. But the Art Commission would be the one to make a recommendation.
There you go, right. Our commission makes a recommendation to you and you see whether it's fit or not.
Well, they may, they may, in, in the, in the case of the Art Commission, many times they are, you know, they, they have a bit more decision-making power over, over some of those things as they go. And so in, you know, in some cases where, you know, the commission may, you know, the commission may have some reservations or have some concerns around something, a lot of times then in trying to work to find a solution, that's where, that's where our staff come in. And, you know, really try to work with applicants to, to bring, to bring projects to the boards and commissions that can, you know, that are able to be approved.
Enough. And the 44 positions that you have, and excuse me for my ignorance, but in the planning department, you have people looking over plans. Okay, of the 44 positions, how many actively, you know, or is there managerial positions? Or is everybody looking over the plans?
No, no. So, you know, again, I mean, whether it's, you know, Grant and his team working on kind of larger climate, you know, climate and resilience based work, they're not, you know, like, although there may be some place in which they may look at a plan, I'd say that it is, it is less likely with that team. And that's a team of, of six and a half. Then, you know, we talked about public art and civic design, although they're working on, you know, plans for applications that are coming in. All of their job isn't, isn't plan review. Cory and his team in zoning and development review, which is staff of 17, those are, you know, I mean, those are the ones who I would say, you know, the largest portion of their job is, is looking at plans. And that, you know, that, that could be looking at plans because they're doing a review and approval of something that's just happening without any need for public process. But then if it has to go to the zoning board of adjustment, or if it has to go to the planning commission or contextual design advisory panel, all of that, all of that process, they're working to facilitate that as a part of their job as well.
I see. And I see our budget director has stepped back and maybe this might be a question for him as well. The trust funds, you have four separate trust funds.
Yes.
What is the reason for trust funds?
Sure. So the, the trust funds, the trust, you know, just start from the top and go down. Stormwater management trust fund, there is a provision in Title 13 of the code, the stormwater management section, where, you know, people, what can happen is that an applicant, a developer could look to pay a fund in lieu of providing a stormwater facility. There are reasons to do that if it's what's called an act two site where you might not want to dig into, you know, might not want to dig into the ground or, you know, some other sites that already have, you know, disturbance in some other ways. You may not actually want to build a stormwater management facility on that site. It actually may be worse for us environmentally to be able to do that. There are other cases where people opt into, you know, into that, you know, that, so they, they can contribute a fund, a fee in lieu in exchange for that. One of the things that when, when city council approved the changes to Title 13 just last month, one of the things as a part of that was, you know, that was helping us get to a way to start to spend that money so that, so that we can use that trust fund to better support some of the projects that our partner departments may be doing, whether that's, you know, Department of Public Works on an open space project, or whether that's the Water and Sewer Authority on some of the places where we connected them. These might be funds that could be used to supplement those projects to be able to increase the amount of stormwater that we can, you know, take on in those locations to offset what we're seeing from the developers who are paying into that. And so, so that, you know, the open space trust fund, which has a much smaller balance. And so, so that, you know, the open space trust fund, which has a much smaller balance, is a similar, is a similar thing. In some of our most urban districts, we do have a requirement for open space on developments of certain size. And, you know, if for some reason, you know, either they decide not to or there are other limitations that create it where they're not able to provide open space on a lot, they may contribute to the trust fund, which then can go towards, you know, again, you know, either purchase of property for open space or, you know, or other features getting built into open space that are public projects.
Let me, let me make sure I got this straight. Okay, so somebody has a major development somewhere in the city. It's not feasible, say, for them to come up with a stormwater management plan that we like to see them have.
Yes.
We're saying that's okay. As long as you contribute to our trust fund a little bit of money and then we can now use that money to, you know, fight water mitigation in other ways. So it's kind of like, yeah, it doesn't make sense for you here. We can't possibly do a stormwater, stormwater management plan because of, like as you said, you know, stated, whether it's other lines or depending on where it's at. But we're saying, but we want you to contribute to our fund so we can fight it in other parts of the city and have that balance.
Yeah, and it's, and it's, and it's not, for us, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a first choice. I mean, our preference is always that, you know, applicants, when they are coming through, that they're able to build stormwater facilities to manage runoff, you know, on their sites.
Right. But, you know. Truth is, it just may not.
Right.
Be feasible.
Yeah, and when we, you know, when we went through this process over the last two years of updating Title 13 to the code, we did update all of those regulations. I think one of the reasons that even beyond that, that we were maybe a little less likely to try to pursue that option is that, you know, we were finding that what those contributions weren't necessarily matching impact. And so, you know, we did, we did try to change that with the revisions that council passed.
So how do you, how do you come up about that fee? So say somebody, say a typical, I'm just throwing numbers out, say a typical stormwater management, you know, plan would acquire, say, $2 million for the developer. And we decide, well, we can't do it there. So we would like you to, you know, these pad or fund a little bit so we can fight it in different areas. Who dictates that amount? Is that based on a percentage of the project or?
Sure. So the change that was made with the revisions to Title 13 was that before an applicant would submit an engineer's estimate. They would submit an engineer's estimate for what the costs would be for them to build that system. And, you know, then, you know, we would confirm, you know, confirm the numbers in our review of their stormwater management plan and then agree to, agree to a number.
Yeah, so we kind of just sit down and be like, hey, it would have cost you 2 million, but you give us 500,000 and we're good.
Well, no, so, you know, so that cost to build was always the cost that was requested. However, we strengthen those regulations in the code and actually, because the thing was is that that could, that, you know, that engineer's estimate could vary wildly on a number of things relative to that space. And, you know, you know, and so what we did was, and I don't remember the exact numbers offhand to be, you know, but we did change that to, you know, the number of gallons of water that that's supposed to, that's supposed to take on and then calculate the fee that way. So it's much more a flat fee. This is what it is. You know, if you, you know, if you're looking to pursue this option, you have to go, you know, you have to go this route and there's already a calculation, you know, that's there and been done. To try to take more of that, you know, I mean, with a lot of the pieces of code, you know, we always try to find the balance of making sure that we're able to accept and incorporate public input into a process, but at the same time, really trying to stick to code and try to stick to, you know, hard guidelines or code that make our, you know, any of the administration, any of the administrative decisions that planning staff are making that they're based on code. And then those things that go to boards and commissions are the places where, you know, there might be, you know, the boards and commissions then play a role more on kind of the ways in which, you know, process and engagement and input, you know, then influence.
So do we have a dollar amount in these trust funds that we know of or? Sorry, I don't have.
Yeah, we, no, we do with the stormwater management trust fund. We do have a balance there. The open space trust fund, we also have a balance. The stormwater trust fund is just over $600,000.
600,000? Okay.
And then the open space trust fund has around 90,000.
Okay, and when did we start those trust funds?
The stormwater trust fund, I believe that has been in place for about four years, five, I mean, I, there was, you know, we, I'd have to go back to check when we took that.
Okay, that's all. I'm just, I'm just trying to see what, how long it took to accumulate to 600,000.
And then, and then the new trust fund, which has no balance in it at this point in time, is the one around, the one stop, the, you know, technology trust fund for open space BGH, the, you know, or I'm sorry, one-stop PGH. Sorry, mixing trust funds now. And, you know, that is around, oh, you know, you know, permit fees kind of going into the ability to upkeep the technology that's required for the online permitting system and, you know, our permit operation.
So you've utilized these funds? I mean, we've, we've used these for?
The stormwater, the stormwater trust fund, yes. The one-stop permitting, the technology, that one's, and that's a new one being introduced for 2022, which is why it has no balance.
Okay, just one more thing. I heard, I heard you mention Solno Run Planning. What do you have going on at Solno Run?
This is the capital budget, this is the capital budget project, I think that your, you know, that your office had put into the budget in a prior year. And so, you know, with, you know, kind of getting through some of the park master plans that we've had capital budget for and also state grants for, because we do get, for a lot of the park master plan work, we get state grants, which do put a specific timeline on our ability to spend that money. So we've been moving through those and, you know, we do have on our work plan for 2022, moving forward with the Solno Run Open Space and Zoning Study that I know we've discussed at various points in time.
Yep, yep, yeah, that's right. Okay, just making sure that's the same project.
Yep.
Hey, Mr. Chair, that's it. I appreciate it. Thank you guys for being here.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Go to Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Appreciate all your good work. I think I'm on my third or fourth year now of saying that I do not, that I think you should have more staff and not fewer staff. So I missed the very beginning of the presentation, but I have Mr. Strellick's memo. And it says that there is a decrease yet again this year of positions in planning, Director. A decrease of six positions. So I just wanted to give you a chance to revisit that, if you, if you will.
I mean, the, you know, that is correct. You know, some of those positions were formerly the Office of Community Affairs positions, but there, you know, I mean, some of those are other decreases. And yes, that is, those are the numbers.
So I'm pretty sure I said this last year, so I'm going to say it again this year. And last year I had a failed budget amendment that council did not support to give back positions to the city planning department. I would like to try, I will be trying again to add planners back because it's also true last year, we got some 3,000 emails asking city council to revise its budget to do more investments, more investments in neighborhoods, more investments in communities. And I believe that part of those things require city plans for those neighborhoods and community improvements. While I understand that Councilwoman Strausburger was talking about how, well, okay, this is the budget we have and, you know, so, but in times are different, and so how do we navigate this outreach? I do think those are kind of open questions, but that no matter what the engagement looks like, even if it is different than 20 years ago, even if there are new mediums, it's really difficult to do community plans without fewer and fewer planning staff. Burgess, are you still there? You're on mic. Thank you. So I, I want to ask you, because I don't recall, how many positions were you down, did you lose last year?
I have the number. I think that in, in 2019, we had 51 and a half positions. That moved to 49 in 2020. That moved to 51 in the initial, or, you know, 51 in the 2021 budget that Bill had mentioned, just because one of those positions is great, was grant funded, was funded through a grant. And that is actually the position that was added into our budget for six months was because that grant expires in June of 2022.
What was that position? Sorry to interrupt you. What was that position that was grant funded?
The climate and energy manager position.
So that wasn't someone who was doing reviews and adding?
It's a position that's in our sustainability and resilience division that was funded through a two-year grant. And a grant, can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe with the National Resources Defense Council. Am I correct in that grant?
You are correct.
And that, that grant expires in June. That position has been pretty instrumental in a lot of our work on, on certain programs relative to, you know, to our climate work. You know, to projects like the streetlights project with Department of Mobility Infrastructure, to other items relative to, you know, to our work on climate mitigation. So, you know, it's, although it shows up as an additional position in our budget, it is, it is staff capacity that we presently have and just making that permanent as a part of, you know, that grant expiring and the opportunity within the operating budget to do so.
All right, so we're saying 51.5, then 49, and then 44?
That's, that's where we're at for the, the operating budget, yes.
Okay, so you've done nearly seven, well, more than seven positions. So I'm going to say that's about a 15% decrease in three years. And I don't see the reason for that. It looks to me that we need more city planning, that we are trying to do important neighborhood work without neighborhood plans. And while council members go to the community meetings, we work closely with our RCOs and as has been pointed out, some have more capacity and some have less capacity. We still need the power of codified neighborhood plans. You've put the kind of template in place that helps the community organizations try to put suggestive plans in place that planning could adopt. But we could actually do the plans if we have planners. And so I'm going to say, you know, it's like the important work that your department was able to do to support inclusionary zoning is evidence of the power of, you know, us actually giving the needed resources to city planning department. We've seen codified neighborhood plans where you've worked around the city and disinvested neighborhoods. But by contrast, in a neighborhood like Bloomfield, that's undergoing a lot of imminent development pressure and has had a lot of change in the population in the last eight years. A lot, you know, not as dramatic as some neighborhoods, but still a steady price pressure on both sales and rentals. We are having to fund that to be outsourced because you don't have the capacity in-house. And I don't want to mistake that, but that's the way I understand it. Am I, am I correct?
You are correct. And, you know, obviously there are multiple approaches to pursuing plans like that. One is to hire consultants, you know, to do that. We are, I mean, we are trying to avoid that where possible because, you know, it is better to have the capacity in-house to be able to then have the same people that are working on developing those plans be the ones working with communities and residents to implement them. You know, I'd say that sometimes, given the staff that we have, that's, you know, that's not necessarily possible. And in those cases, that is where we have to, to hire consultants to be able to supplement the work of staff. And, you know, we've tried to, we've tried to specialize the work that we're hiring out a little bit more, you know, so that the faces, the faces that you're seeing in community meetings are, you know, aren't consultants. They are people, you know, they are planners that are employed by the city that will continue to be working with those communities after, you know, planners that we may consult with are gone. But, you know, obviously, you know, to be able to manage the level of work that we have with the staff that we presently have, you know, it does require, you know, it requires us to either have consultants or get more capacity.
I'm going to expand on that and say that, especially given the fact that we're about to see significant infrastructure money from the federal government. We don't know what else money we might find, but we're definitely getting the infrastructure money that I don't think we should be separating our infrastructure investments and our city planning the way we have been doing. I think we need to really lean on city planning to look at where those investments happen as well. And you've probably heard me say over the years, certainly my council colleagues have heard me say way, way too many times over the last eight years, that we're not just rebuilding the city above ground. We're also rebuilding for the next 100 years below ground, right? We have 100-plus-year-old infrastructure that is collapsing. And you really can't develop above ground without developing below ground. And we've been keeping these things far too siloed. And I believe that they should be more integrated. And I believe that it's our land use power that is really our core local government responsibility and that we should resource that. And if we don't, we're really letting down our neighborhoods because the powers that have money will be making those decisions for them. And, and that is, that is not the way it has to be. The reason we have land use power is so we can support our residents in shaping the neighborhoods that they want to live in and empowering them to, to, to have the power, for example, with inclusionary zoning, to keep the neighbors that they want in their neighborhood and create that space for people across incomes. But that's just one example that we have in depopulating by half as a city over the last, you know, three or four decades, but then also living through nearly two decades of austerity and having downsized our city departments. We have a lot of building back that we need to do at the city level. And that it is our both responsibility and power as a local jurisdiction to do that through the power of city planning. So I will once again be lobbying to add positions back to your department. And I hope to be more successful in this budget year. But I do want to thank you for, again, it's supporting inclusionary zoning in its first go-around in Lawrenceville and in creating it in a way that it can be expanded. And we have it under review now in Bloomfield and Polish Hill. And also working with Bloomfield to do its master planning process and helping us develop that scope, even though it has to be outsourced. And I don't see Councilwoman Smith here, but every year she says, I don't think we need more city planning. I think we need less. And I say back to her, watch out, because one day those developers are going to come for you in your district. And then you're going to understand how much you need the Pittsburgh City Planning Department. So I'll be saying that again this year. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I'd say just to the infrastructure comment, you know, when, I mean, that is something that does occur through many of the neighborhood planning processes that we take on. If we think about work that's going on in Uptown with the Bus Rapid Transit and how stormwater infrastructure was aligned with that, or, you know, discussions of how district energy infrastructure is aligned with that, I mean, those are conversations that come from community and get integrated into those neighborhood planning efforts. You know, to your point, though, we, you know, have completed neighborhood plans and nine of our 90 neighborhoods are working in nine of them right now, and they are two-year processes. So, I mean, you know, like, I mean, given, you know, I mean, which, which is the pace that we're probably able to do with the staff that we have, you know, to be, to be honest.
We need to pick up the pace. I appreciate it. That's all. Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Wilson.
Thank you. President Kyle Smith on the line with us? I can't see. Cannot see below a certain name. Anyone else online? Oh, can you see? All right.
I'm online.
Well, I want to, Councilman Lavelle or, I saw Councilman Lavelle previously, but Councilman Burgess?
Yes. First of all, I think city, city planning does an outstanding job. I'm a fan. So I have a question to you. I see that you have, you have replaced the Office of Community Engagement with the Public other you have replaced the Office of Community Engagement with the Public Affairs Office, right? You've taken, because of, you know, scarcity, you reduced that to one person, correct? That's kind of how I see it.
Of the Office of Community Affairs, although I would say most of their work occurred in the mayor's office, you know, when the budget was reopened in the what, you know, in in the middle of the year this year, those positions were moved out of planning's budget. The, you know, the one position that is relative to that that did stay in city planning is now the is now the public engagement coordinator position. Other Office of Community Affairs positions have either been moved to other departments or eliminated.
And so the, so so right now, there's no real plan to like the the citizen engagement, I forget what it was called, the when we used to train about city government, the 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 City Academy?
The Civic Leadership Academy, yes.
Where is that going to go? Where's that going to be? How is that now? We don't know yet.
I don't, I, yeah, I don't have an answer to that question. That was, you know, a project kind of driven by the mayor's office that was that was managed by the Office of Community Affairs.
It predates this mayor. I mean, it's, it predates, it predates.
Yes, and it was, it was actually done by, I believe, there were neighborhood initiative staff under, you know, under the administration prior. Which were also, you know, which were also housed in city planning, i- city planning's budget at that time.
Alright, um, and so you would agree with me, and when you talked about specially special specialty community engagement. You mentioned, you mentioned housing as one, but there's, there are, you know, there are specific skill level, for instance, in the African American community, right? There's a, there's a specialized need to have public engagement people that have a background in in African American communities or Hispanic communities or that. There there is not just project specific, but it could be people specific that they have this expertise that would, that would be greater community participation. I'm I'm, I that just, I'm just taking your thought and and kind of drawing it to its conclusion. So I will, I I am kind of in between Councilwoman Gross, but I'm I'm really more in Councilwoman Strausberger's position. I I really think, I think we need to figure out a way to engage the public more. And and that I will be, I will be thinking and talking with members about about the the public engagement process. And then, you know, I don't want us to lose the Civic Leadership Academy where we actually literally bring people in. I know there's something I've taught it a couple of times over the years. I've been counsel's participatory teacher in that. And so it's dear to my heart. So we'll work together on what that looks like perhaps moving forward so that we can supplement. I I I agree, we need to supplement with what planning is doing with some other activities. And I will be working with council to try to do that. But I really, I I appreciate your service. We don't always agree, but we've worked together. I think the plan we did in Holland was spectacular. And you guys did a great job on that comprehensive community plan. And the plans we are doing, the smaller planning processes that you are leading across my district, where many of them had had no planning in fifty years, have been, you know, exemplary. And so I really thank you for your your leadership, and I and I do support the the department.
Appreciate the words. You know, I would agree that, you know, on the public engagement and, you know, that there is, you know, always a need to do more and do better. And that that is definitely what we're what we're trying to do. And but appreciate the support.
I'm finished. Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lavelle?
Thank you. So I have a que- question to sort of follow up on what Councilwoman Gross was speaking about. Because I agree with her from the standpoint of we have to really begin looking at our infrastructure. And that especially in a lot of African American communities, the infrastructure is really, really poor. My question is, if we were to find resources to give to planning, unless you, we use Center Avenue as an example. We're currently trying to build out Center Avenue as a sort of a new business district for the community. We actually have a groundbreaking for a new barber shop tomorrow. However, all the lines under Center Avenue need replaced. The water lines are in horrible condition. If each developer has to take on the burden of dealing with infrastructure by themselves, it's going to actually be hard to make each specific deal work. With that being said, if we were ever to find you the resources necessary, is planning in a position to do planning around infrastructure? And I'm hoping I'm asking the question appropriately. Like, as we're doing comprehensive plans, is planning in a position, if you have the additional resources, to also be looking at how you're going to plan to build out infrastructure? And in my mind, that that also equates to how the city is planning to go after federal dollars to deal with infrastructure. Does that question make any sense to you, Director?
No, it does. And I I think there are some pieces where it moves a little bit out of planning's wheelhouse. I think the places where that is are the specifics of how that infrastructure gets installed and done. And that's where we have a Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and that kind of work. However, when we think about what the future of these communities are, and we think about, you know, for example, with Center Avenue example, we think about what what is the future of the Hill District? How many more people, how many more businesses are going to be in that look, those locations? So we can think about not only infrastructure that's underground, but also the need for, you know, sidewalks and, you know, and pedestrian space, the need for open spaces, all of those, you know, the need for stormwater management. All of those things are really integrated together as infrastructure. And, you know, whether it's through, I mean, you know, I'd say we see the vehicle primarily as being the neighborhood plans that we're working with communities on, that we can have these discussions, understand how we set development regulations to, you know, to to put that together, that the that that future that communities see themselves, you know, being. And being able to say, alright, well, if this is the type of growth that's going to happen here, this is the type of infrastructure that we're going to need to support it. To then turn that over to our, you know, some of our partner departments, whether it's Department of Public Works, whether that's our Department of Mobility Infrastructure, to then go through and actually work on putting together the funds to build, you know, to build those improvements.
Okay. Do you currently have? And maybe you don't need a new job description, but do you currently have sort of an ideal job description of of what that person would be doing specifically around infrastructure?
Well, again, I I think it's taking the work of, you know, of some of the kind of the future looking, you know, the future forward planning and saying, alright, well, this is what we're going to be. And then understanding how that works at a district scale. And so, you know, we have, you know, we we have some components of that that are on staff, whether that's our environmental planners who are looking at some aspects of that, whether it is some of the capacity that we have on Grant and his team relative to relative to energy and energy infrastructure. You know, I'd say that at the same time, to to really, you know, to really be able to dig into that at scale, you know, it is something that, you know, that does that, you know, that does require more help. And and like, like the conversation with 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 Councilwoman Gross, you know, I mean, you know, that that happens in one of two ways. That happens with, you know, more capacity at a staff level or, you know, kind of assistance at a consultant level, you know, when it's needed.
Okay, understood. I guess my request would be, because I don't disagree with Councilwoman Gross's premise. In our last cycle, I disagreed with how we were going to pay for it. I don't disagree with her premise that we want to support the planning department to the greatest extent possible. I guess what I would ask, if you could maybe send over if you had your, your your druthers, here's exactly what we would need, here's what would, here's what it would cost, here's the position that would allow us to go really more in depth and provide that with specifically to Councilwoman Gross, but you provided to all the council. Then as she's going to look after, going looking for resources, we know exactly specifically what we're funding as opposed to just saying, oh, we want to give you five more planners. But rather, no, we want this specific set of expertise within your wheelhouse. My second question, wh- where are we at with conservation districts?
Conservation districts. So actually, you know, we had worked internally to to create a draft of that. I would say that, you know, just with other staff priorities, that has, you know, not been able to get across the finish line, to be honest. You know, that there would be, you know, more community engagement that would need to be done in advance of taking that to the Planning Commission. And, you know, with the priorities of getting some of the things that we were able to get accomplished, you know, this year done, that, you know, that that did not, you know, I mean, you know, we didn't have the capacity to be able to take that on at this time.
Okay, um, it literally, I just thought of it. Admittedly, I haven't stayed on top of it either, because as you're well aware, at some point, I was looking at it for the upper portion of Central North Side, which then just became a historic district. So that sort of fell by my ways that, but it does make me, as we talk about the the planning around housing, the comprehensive plans, we think about these sort of things, conservation districts could become another tool. So to the extent we pick it back up next year, it may be worthwhile doing so.
It is definitely, it is definitely a place that could be, you know, a tool in the toolbox. I know we've talked about it, Councilmen, as well, in places like the Middle Hill. You know, that as we work through the update to the Greater Hill District Master Plan, you know, that we we may be thinking about ways that, you know, tools like that can be used to, you know, to either protect community character in some places or to, you know, to install it in a way that replicates, you know, what either existed or once existed.
Agreed, agreed. It would also even help with the whole debate over garages and cutting into sidewalks, things of that nature. But we can, we can deal with that at a more appropriate time. Those were the only questions I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other council people on the line before I start asking my questions? Alright, thank you, Director, and thank you to your staff for everything you do. So in terms of the stormwater code that we changed recently, PLI is adding six more positions on their side for that. Is that correct?
I believe there are, I I don't recall the exact number. I think it's three storm inspectors that are dedicated.
Right, okay, okay. I probably have my numbers mixed up.
But yes, towards, you know, towards implement, you know, being able to implement the inspection and enforcement side of Title thirteen. So the plan review, plan review for the systems will take place, will continue to take place with city planning. Some of the review functions that, you know, have been informally taken on by PWSA or something that needed to be taken on. And so
The way we've
That additional capacity at PLI is 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 what's kind of taking that work on as well as the inspection.
The way we pay for that is not through this trust fund, though?
It is not through the trust fund. Now, the intention of the trust fund was that if developers or applicants were, you know, providing funding to, you know, to not have to provide stormwater infrastructure, that the fund would then be used to be spent on projects to then offset that and to take on the stormwater that those projects, you wouldn't have.
Just remind me, that's all new builds, not current?
Sorry.
I would have to buy by that stormwater code, if you can remind me.
It would be new development that would have to, you know, to go under the new Title thirteen when it's reviewed, yes.
Alright, so I'm looking at this and I'm seeing that the, you know, it's going to be increased to seventy thousand for the Marshall Shalen Brighton Heights Neighborhood Plan. If there, if we did have all the staff, you know, more planners in house, would we have to spend as much money on this plan?
If there is more staffing, no, I mean, you know, the, you know, if there was, there was more staffing, then, you know, the intent would be that it would, you know, reduce or eliminate the the need for, you know, for these consultant contracts. And so, you know, to Councilperson Strasbergers comment earlier, if there are, you know, neighborhood planners and planners that have specific special specializations, then, you know, you know, you know, for example, some of the, you know, the economic planning work that we've had to consult in Oakland and the Hill District, which are the two planning projects that we have going on now, or some of the urban design work that, you know, are capabilities that we don't necessarily have within the department, that, you know, if those were staff, then they, there wouldn't be a need to to have those as consultants.
How many neighborhood planners would be? You know, for instance, would need to be within the department, that would work on it if we never went outside the department? This Marshall Shalen Brighton Heights Plan?
Um, I I think that, I mean, you know, we would probably have, I mean, I can get back to you on that.
I mean, like two, three?
I mean, the the short answer is to, you know, to have, you know, to have somebody who is the neighborhood planner that is serving that community that is involved in those neighborhood plans, as well as having, you know, then support from, you know, from broader team. If there are people that are focused on housing or on economics or on urban design, that those are, you know, those are then, you know, functions that, you know, even though they may be contributing to other projects as well, that they would be able to contribute to these neighborhood plans that would be led by a neighborhood planner.
Then, how many people from the public get involved with these neighborhood plans? I've been asked to get two people from the community group, be part of the neighborhood plan.
Well, I mean, it depends, I mean, the answer is it varies wildly. And the other answer is it varies wildly, the level of engagement. And so, you know, whether that that is committed residents who are serving on steering committees that are guiding the work of the plans to, you know, to interested residents who are participating in things like action teams around specific topics in their neighborhoods, to residents who might not have a whole lot of time to do anything but fill out an online survey. You know, there are different levels, and we we try to, we try to really focus on creating different levels of ways for people to be involved as well as, you know, opportunities for, you know, I mean, we would love for everyone to participate at the highest level and and help and help guide all of the work. And we'd love for every resident to participate. I think, you know, the reality of lives and jobs and family situations and other things don't allow that to take place. And so, you know, we try to, number one, create as many different types of opportunities as possible. And number two, especially with the EngagePGH platform, we've been able to, you know, hopefully, become a lot more transparent with documents and meetings and things like that, that there is a record of all of that for people. If they can't come in at the beginning, that if they, you know, come in in the middle or if they come in later, that there's an opportunity to see why decisions were made the way that they were and that, you know, and and the and the places where, you know, residents and stakeholders were able to influence ultimately the outcome of these planning projects.
So in terms of increase in the funding for neighborhood planners, is that what they would call?
That that is, we do have, yes.
Yeah, see, you know, I I think we'll find this, and especially in the Marshall Shalen area. And then several other parts throughout the North Side. See, I think we should, not that I don't think neighborhood planners do a good job, you know. I guess I'll find out here with Marshall Shalen Brighton Heights Plan, although we'll be outsourcing some of that. You know, my district is is plagued with vacant abandoned housing. And so I wonder how much, you know, funding do we put with neighborhood planners instead of increasing the funding for the neighborhood economic development funding, the net funding? And then also, you know, just how much city support we do to building capacity so that neighborhoods are part of their own development with housing, vacant abandoned property. I mean, I understand, you know, there's some districts that are booming and they're, you know, you got Lawrenceville, you got Oakland, they're worried about, you know, well, what is this, what is this part of the, you know, neighborhood look like in ten years? It's just that it's really hard to think about spending more resources on neighborhoods that maybe think, you know, maybe concerned about that, what that would leave behind, you know, areas like Marshall Shalen, who they're going to be a part of this planning process, but as you'll You know, areas like Marshall Shalen, who they're going to be a part of this planning process, but as you'll find out, they have a lot of vacant abandoned property. And I think that's what's affecting my my constituents the most.
Yeah. And and I mean, for example, um, you know, we worked in the Homewood neighborhood to complete a neighborhood plan there. And you know, one of the implementation items that we are presently, you know, in the process of moving forward on, uh, you know, and we're able to get some state funding to do this was looking at the vacant properties in Homewood and trying to assess them for different types of uses. And so that isn't necessarily development in most cases, because, um, you know, although in some cases, you know, Homewood is starting to see development pressure from its neighbors to, you know, from its neighbors to the south and to the west. But at the same time, a lot of those properties, um, you know, aren't seeing, you know, are not going to see that development pressure in the, in in the near term. And, you know, and identifying whether that's looking at those for stormwater management, because they, the residents that are around there are seeing flooding issues. You know, whether that is looking for some of those is opportunities for things like our adopt a lot program where people are able to, you know, to use those for gardens, uh, to be able to grow food and be become more sustainable. You know, that we're doing, you know, doing projects like that as implementation of these neighborhood plans to be able to improve quality of life for people that are, you know, that isn't just affected by development, right? And so that although there are some neighborhoods where we're completing neighborhood plans where um, we're trying to create that development future and understand how that development future can then, you know, either help fund or help build some of these improvements that, you know, that community members want to see. In some cases, it is projects that, you know, that we as the city just need to be more coordinated on to address those needs, uh, there.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I'll bring this up because I think that we need to do one or the other first, I guess I should make that clear. I just think we need to be mindful of like how that fits into, because I know, like, if we could, you know, throughout this neighborhood plan with Marshall Shalen Brighton Heights, if we can leverage what we find, you know, in terms of vacant abandoned housing. And how we can identify, you know, areas that would be, you know, would see the greatest impact or, you know, title research and 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 then, you know, working with the neighborhood group, working with the land bank, really a way to to leverage what we find there, but also not to wait, you know, to, I know this takes a couple of years, right? This will take a couple of years to
The neighborhood planning process, yeah, neighborhood planning process is a 24 month process.
Yeah, hopefully some of those things can be identified sooner than later, because I guess I'm, I'm going to keep on going back to this point of my district. And, you know, there's, I guess roughly three or four other districts that, you know, faces this issue. And how we can, like, you know, really include that in these neighborhood plans. All right, um, I don't have any further, uh, questions unless, uh, any other members had any other, uh, questions or or ending, ending thoughts here. Okay. All right. Well, with that said, I will take a motion to adjourn. No, I don't need that.
Not a motion to adjourn. We just, um,
Sorry, sorry, not to adjourn, to recess, right?
Yes.
I don't have, I don't have in front of me what the next.
It's actually, we're only recessing for about five minutes and we'll be going into RA Housing Opportunity Fund and Land Bank. So if you want to stay on.
Exactly.
Talk about the vacant properties, but I'll be, we'll just be switched, I'll be sharing here remote.
All right. So we'll just take a break for about five minutes?
Yes.
All right, great. I don't need any, any approval for that.
Thank you.
We will start with a summary from our council budget office. Actually, if you could take off your screen sharing. If you could take down the screen sharing, thank you. What we'll do is I'll start with the council budget office. Looks like we're joined by Mr. Strellick. Who will do a little recap for members first, and then I'll turn it over to the RA for your presentation. Thank you. Mr. Strellick introduced, oh, he just left us. Are you back, Mr. Strellick? Mr. Strellick, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, thank you. If you could give us the overview for the RA.
Oh, sorry, I was closing my door there. Uh, so we're joined with the RA. At this meeting, the Urban Redevelopment Authority is the City of Pittsburgh Economic Development Agency, supporting the city's economic development goals, which are designed to create a city of inclusive opportunities for residents, stakeholders and communities. And, uh, Councilman Lavelle is council's representative on the URA board. The URA is in the operating budget at a city's operating budget, rather, at at two places, both related to the purchase of the 412 Boulevard of the Allies Building. We, the city financed it, we were able to get get a better rate than the Housing Authority and URA did. So the city financed all of it, and then the URA reimburses us for the purchase, uh, just like the Housing Authority does. This year, they're expected to give us $522,682. They also have about a dozen line items in the capital budget. I'm not going to go through all of them because I'm sure they're on their presentation. But they total, uh, nine million, five hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars of cities' paygo money, CDBG dollars, and some other funds that run through the city on their way to the URA. And with that, turn it back to, uh, the the chair and then to the URA.
Mr. Strellick, okay. So if you all, if you wouldn't mind, um, if we have the people from the URA who are here with us today, we might just briefly introducing yourselves and then you can go on to share your screen for your presentation.
I'll start. Hi, everybody. It's Greg Flesch, the Executive Director of the URA. I'll popcorn it over to Diamante Walker.
Hello, Diamante Walker, Deputy Executive Director of the URA.
I'll go next. Uh, Tom Link, uh, Chief Strategy Officer, URA. And I'm just looking at my screen. David Geiger, I think you're next on my screen. So I'll send it to you.
Sure. David Geiger, Assistant Director of Strategic Affairs. I see, uh, Joe Karlovitz on my screen.
Hi, everyone. Joe Karlovitz, Director of Finance at the URA. Um, I'll pass it over to Nathan Clark.
Hi, Nathan Clark. I'm the Chief Legal Officer, and I can pass it out to Nick Kudorick.
Hi, I'm Nick Kudorick. I'm the Assistant Director of Policy and Development at the URA, and I'll pass to Shayna.
Hello, I'm Shayna Madden, Housing Director. For your and I'll pass that to Josette.
Hi, everybody. I'm Josette Fitzgibbons. I'm Neighborhood Business District Manager at the URA. And I will pass it to Jennifer.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Jennifer Wilhelm. I'm the Chief Lending and Solutions Officer at the URA. Pass it over to Daniel.
All right, Daniel Grant, then, uh, the head of Operations Coordinator for the URA. I think that's everyone.
Is it everyone? I lost count. I was at 12, I think.
Nathan, did you introduce yourself?
I did, yes.
That's Nathan. So we think we got everybody. And I don't know, who is that, whoever, I'll just kind of turn my screen off and whoever wants to start your presentation, but why don't you give us a little warning? How long of our presentation do you think you have for a slideshow?
We budgeted, uh, I think there are about 35 content slides. I think we budgeted about an hour. We realize it's late in the day. And you all have been at this for a long time, so we'll try to be brief, concise, but impactful.
I'll share part of the credit. I think for years I have asked you all to make more of a presentation, so. But I would appreciate if it, if, um, if we can make it publicly available, Madam Clark. You don't have to respond, but just so if if we do go quickly and members of the public are looking for it, we'll make sure it's attached somehow to the session so that members of the public can see it.
So yes, we'll try to get through this fairly quickly and happily for you all. You'll be hearing from from more than just me. We have, as you've seen, a pretty big roster of URA staff who will be taking, carrying some of the load on the presentation. So thank you, members of the City Council, Councilwoman Strasburg, Strasburgers and Gross. What I'd like to do, though, before we get started, is to, um, acknowledge the the outgoing Pidudo administration. They've been great to work with. They've been nothing if not totally supportive of the URA since, uh, since I've been here. And they've been a great deal of fun to collaborate with and, uh, we'll miss them and they're great champions of the city. So with that, let's get into the kind of the meat of the presentation. Our vision, I'm not going to read this verbatim, but, um, our vision is we're the Economic Development Organization for the city. And I think that the term economic development here is really kind of a a misnomer, really the economic and I would say community development organization for the city of Pittsburgh. Yes, we still do large projects like Southside Works, Pittsburgh Technology Center. On any given day, you know, we are, we were talking to CEOs of companies looking to relocate larger developers, you know, founders of startup companies. Uh, but we also manage the, you know, the the NIF program, neighborhood improvement, uh, program for the city. Uh, we have a large and growing affordable housing portfolio. We run a number of homeownership assistance programs. We really are a community economic organization. And and then again, again, we were just as likely as speaking to a CEO of a company as we are to a little old lady who needs a new roof and everything in between. And as somebody who has worked, uh, for peer organizations in other cities and has consulted for others, I can honestly say I don't think there's another community development organization in a city our size that has quite a diverse portfolio that we carry. But this is our our vision. If you've seen it before, we'll go into the next slide. Again, create more housing that is affordable, encourage entrepreneurship and small business development, particularly along some of our marginalized populations, promote inclusive growth, expand neighborhood and main street revitalization efforts specifically in disinvested neighborhoods, and help develop the talent in our inner city to to grow our economy. Next slide. Uh, we kind of adhere to this idea that we call equity economics. That means a lot of things to us, means, uh, an economic development or a theory of economic development philosophy that is, you know, unapologetically redistributive and remedial. We're really focused on transforming opportunity deserts, opportunity neighborhoods, really focused on the acceleration creation of neighborhood wealth. Very supportive of livable wages, uh, connecting our projects to the workforce system, being very deliberate in that way, and really helping to build up our WNBE ecosystem. Next slide, please. So a quick snapshot of our of our budget, and I'm not going to get into a deep drill down here. Suffice it to say, our budget, our operating budget is $12.6 million um, on the, on the expense side of the ledger, but 80% of that is made up of of our wages, personnel and benefits. And that is offset for about 30% from the revenues we receive from you all on an annual basis. And with that, uh, very brief introduction, I'm going to volley it over to Dr. Diamante Walker and Tom Link respectively to talk about our productivity over the past, at least to date in 21, uh, 2021 to date. So Diamante?
Thank you, Greg. And before I begin, I would like to, in addition to thanking the outgoing Mayor Pidudo Administration, I'd also like to thank this governing body for your continued support. You have been a stalwart partner, uh, to the URA and the impact that we are getting ready to to walk you through briefly. Uh, this is a shared accomplishment and without your support and your thought leadership, it would not be possible. Uh, so I'd like to begin with a snapshot of our affordable housing, um, impact uh, through the third quarter here in 2021. Uh, the URA has invested nearly $12 million in housing and that's leveraged about $127 million in total development costs for the projects, uh, which have yielded about 329 affordable housing units. Uh, we are, um, proud to say that 64% of this support has been directed to homeowners or residents that are either minority and or woman heads of household, uh, which is very important because we know that that particular population has been adversely impacted during the course of this pandemic. Uh, the 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 creation of nearly 329 units of affordable housing have been at 80% area median income or below. Uh, with 38 of those units being workforce housing units, which are the housing units that are dedicated to providing housing to teachers and childcare workers and janitors and custodians, uh, which are an important population here within our city. If you could go to the next slide, Daniel. And so when we look at how this has impacted our city from an inclusive growth standpoint, uh, nearly 260 individuals assisted during the housing crisis intervention programs that the URA developed, we've deployed about $624,000 into that program. Nineteen of those individuals, uh, received accessibility improvements, allowing them to stay in their home. This is an important program that allows our senior residents to age in place. And 55 individuals assisted, uh, or provided with legal assistance, uh, totaling about $34,000, a little over $34,000, which is a newer program. And again, tangled title continues to be an issue, uh, here in our city that precludes the ability to preserve affordability and to keep residents in their homes. We could go to the next slide. And so here I'm going to turn this over to Tom Link. He's going to talk a little bit about our economic growth from a workforce and job creation standpoint.
Thanks so much. And I'll just echo, you know, thank you to this body, to City Council and really to the city of Pittsburgh at large. I know that we, you know, we had, we go, you have our hearings every year and go through our capital budget process, but you truly, and, you know, and and the investment by the city and the URA is, uh, is so critical to all the work we do. And, you know, we just thank you and I, you know, and want to, uh, you know, make sure that we're clear in this very public setting and for folks to, uh, that are listening here that, that, you know, the taxpayers and the city's investment in the URA is, um, i- is not lost on how critical it is. And we know there are scarce resources and we do want to be thankful to that. And also let folks know that we, you know, an investment the URA does leverage. You know, hopefully what our, what our quality impacts across our city in terms of home, homes and jobs and quality economic development growth throughout our city. So thank you for that. Yeah, just briefly on inclusive growth, and we can go to the next slide quickly here, but we, you know, we we are a, you know, a core aspect of our work is our investment in small businesses. Um, you know, we we've done this for many, many years. I I would say in the last, you know, three, four years, we've really become a substantial, uh, even more so than we were before, uh, investor in our small business community. This is just through three quarters of 2021. But we've, you know, at this point have invested more than $6 million directly in our small business community, which has leveraged nearly 60 million, so almost 10 to $1 per $1 in investment. Um, over 80, about 80% of these loans have supported minority women's business enterprise businesses, um, which, you know, we really should be, we're very proud of, um, you know, this past year, and especially with the pandemic and sort of a, you know, the the need to make sure that businesses not just had access to capital, but access to resources. We we did quite a bit of work on wayfinding and and business education and webinars to do everything we can to make sure that our small business community had access to not only capital dollars, but also the education of resources to access the, uh, the tools that they need. And, you know, and it's, it's tremendous impact. And, you know, I'm speaking on this, but I'll just say this, I know Jennifer's here, but Jennifer Wilhelm and Jennifer's team here at the URA have just done an unbelievable job, frankly, in this work. And and we should, we're very proud of that. You can go to the next slide. In addition to our investment in small businesses, um, you know, we we were, we are a business maker, a job creator. We also are a placemaker, right? So we invest as in a very traditional way, sort of the development of land and disposition of land into bricks and mortar development. Uh, we accomplish that as a through our land disposition and development process. And Greg, at the top of this, you mentioned our our neighborhood initiatives fund, which invests directly in community land and community driven development projects. Um, but we continue to do, this is a significant, uh, source of our business, so to speak, you know, as we sit here today through three quarters, 2021, we have more than half a billion dollars in sort of total project costs and process. The vast majority of these that are in our, in our, you know, neighborhood business districts or main streets are having these hope communities. Um, in addition to investing directly and sort of activating storefronts and activating, um, commercial corridor activity. And, um, you know, want to provide this here. I will say, I know the public's watching this and folks may watch this on YouTube. I I would say that, you know, anyone out there who's starting a business, has a business that's growing here in the city, you really should feel, um, you know, please contact us. We can help lots of folks. Go to our website, talk to your council office, uh, whatever the right, the best means is for you, but we are here to help and and want to make sure that all of our resources are not only available to, but, you know, we proactive as possible to make sure folks are engaging with us as to their opportunities and and we can explore ways we can help you. Uh, with that, I think I turn it over to Joe, uh, for the next slide. If I, if that's correct, you can go to the next slide. So from here, I'll turn it over to you, Joe. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Um, and yeah, thank you, everyone. Uh, and as Mr. Strellick explained, uh, our allocation includes $9.5 million if, uh, the city's capital budget is broken down here on these line items. Um, this is made up of CDBG, Pago and, um, home allocation. CDBG is $6.5 million, Pago is $837,000. CDBG is $6.5 million, Pago is $837,000 and the remainder of $2.2 million is home. So we will walk you through each of this with members of our team. And to start will be our Assistant Director of Policy and Development, Nick Fedorik.
Thanks, Joe. So we're going to go through and we're going to start with the Affordable Unit Activation line item. I'll go to the next slide, please. This line item will provide financing for the rehab and redevelopment properties that are already owned by the URA. The goal is to take currently vacant URA-owned buildings that are in poor condition and use this financing to convert them into small business space for local entrepreneurs and affordable rental units for low-income households. Go to the next slide, please. So the vacant property in this picture is on Perry'sville Avenue in Perry North. It's URA-owned. The URA owns many structures in a similar condition all over the city. Many of these URA-owned structures, such as this one, would be an ideal location for new small businesses. Many also have the potential to have housing above the storefront. As a URA-owned property, we have the ability to create income restricted housing at all levels of area median income. However, the issue we face is that the rehab costs associated with making the building usable are very high. So there's often interest from potential businesses, tenants or developers, but the rehab costs associated with our structures make these types of small-scale properties infeasible. And the result is that the URA continues to pay holding costs and property maintenance on its buildings without a viable path for redevelopment due to the high rehab costs. So the commercial inventory activation will break this pattern, but providing gap financing for rehab projects that were previously infeasible will become economically viable because of this gap financing. So the result of that $500,000 investment is that we turn unusable buildings such as this with economically infeasible projects into economically viable projects. That results in job creation all across the wage spectrum, tax-based expansion for the city and small business opportunities at the neighborhood level. Some examples across the city that we'd like to use this on at the Center Healthman Plaza in the Hill District, redeveloping 30,000 square feet of commercial space, 6714 Kelly Street in Homewood, redeveloping a former medical clinic at 4,000 square feet of mixed use. And 1318 to 25 Fifth Avenue in Uptown, 4,000 square feet, again, excellent space for local businesses potentially. These are just a few, you know, we have ideas all over the city that this commercial inventory activation would work for. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. And you can go to the next slide. Then the next, this is Tom Link again. The next, the next line item here is $300,000 for workforce development. You can go to the next slide, I think, whoever's controlling the slides. Thanks so much. The intent of these dollars would be, you know, as we mentioned at the top and through our impact, a significant, a significant role we play is investing directly in our small business community and especially our, you know, very micro businesses, very small businesses, especially in our neighborhood business districts. And I would say even more especially in our avenues of hope communities to create quality jobs. And the intention of these dollars would be to invest in our small business community in this way, to not just create a job, but to create a quality job and provide direct resources to provide, you know, tools that either do any combination of lower barriers to entry for either existing workforce or new to the workforce or folks trying to seek the jobs that, that are being created to, to access these jobs, but also create, you know, deliver on the necessary skills to be in a position to take these jobs. We've had success with programs like Expendement Clinics and some, you know, programs around commercial driver's license and others that we've sort of piloted that's been successful in helping our small business community and also on the childcare side actually to build us skill sets necessary to access workforce. This would be to invest directly in our small business community in that way to create quality jobs and have specific resources to ensure that the folks that are accessing the jobs are able to, A, you know, have the necessary credentials as well as skills to be in a position to have success in the job, these quality jobs that we're investing in. Then I think I turn to Nathan for another piece of this. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Another component of our workforce request centers around the maintenance of URA-owned properties. And you can move to the next slide for this one. This is $337,000 in Pago funds that would go towards the URA's land care program and also some other property maintenance. We've been in front of council before to discuss land care. I'm now entering its fifth year, provides for a proactive maintenance of the URA's parcels. Currently there's about 1,400 in our, in our land care bundles divided up between 11 firms. And the, the providers track their care on an app, license fee is paid for by the URA. And over the years, we've had four MBE firms that have started in year one and have grown to take on larger bundles each year. We've added three MBE firms since that time. And it's a, it's a model and a, a structure that has proved successful so far. And through some separate actions with council, we've added some city parcels. And through the generosity of council to fund it, have added some, some city parcels that are also maintained by these same land care providers. At the same time, there's some work that's outside of the scope of, of smaller land care providers, sidewalk repairs, some demolition, or some, you know, stabilization of multi-story buildings. So a portion of this fund will go, of this request will go to stabilize buildings and make sidewalks safe with contractors procured through the same way, looking for small and local contractors. This is again, $337,000 in total to fund a portion of the URA's land care and maintenance. And with that, I can hand it over to Jennifer Wilhelm, who I believe has the next slide.
Thank you, Nathan. Our next item is the Equitable Empowerment Program. Next slide, please. This program has come to you before and have you generously supported it. It is a technical assistance program for developers and business owners who want to own their own real estate in their own neighborhoods. And it is critical in order to keep ownership and equity of the people that live there in the neighborhoods. We have had great success with this program thus far. In fact, you see Tom Boyd here of Big Tom's Barber Shop is a prime example. Groundbreaking is tomorrow for this amazing project, of which he will own his own commercial building with affordable apartments on the top. And his barber shop will be going into this beautiful space when it is finished and renovated. And all that was made possible through this program and the one-on-one technical assistance that he received free of charge in order to make sure that the value remains in these critical communities. Next slide, please. Moving on to Josette.
Good afternoon, everybody. Can we move to the next slide? So first I'm going to talk about our Neighborhood Initiatives Fund that we mentioned a little bit earlier. This fund, I know a lot of you are familiar with. This assists nonprofit and community-based organizations with neighborhood scale projects within their neighborhoods primarily, but not only in commercial corridors. Since 2019, we've awarded 37 grants in 30 different neighborhoods and nearly $2 million of investment. This, this, this program funds vacant property reclamation, historic preservation, public infrastructure. And what we're asking for in 2022 is $500,000, again, up to 10 grants can be awarded and a minimum of $250,000 in private grant match is, is raised through that. Next slide, please. So a couple of case studies of our, of our NIF programs. The first is the Breschier Hilltop Center. This is actually a pretty small grant. It was, we, the Breschier Hilltop Center opened in Knoxville in 2021, in the building that you see in front of you. They also purchased properties next to their, their current building. And the $12,500 that we awarded is enabling them to do the necessary pre-development studies. This will enable them to even, do even further expansion of their important services in the South Side and South Hilltop communities. The next slide, please. So this is a, a project that we just funded this year in our 2021 round. 523, 527 Larmour Avenue. This is a large mixed-use building on Larmour, Larmour Avenue, right in the middle of their business district. They received $100,000 award. The total project cost is $171,000 for a facade reconstruction. This building was traditionally a mixed-use building and had street front retail. As you can see, that was all closed up. And what this project will, will do is open up the, the first floor for two new retail storefronts. Next slide. So our next is our Neighborhood Business District Assistance Program. Next slide, please. This is, okay, this is kind of the, the nuts and bolts of the work that we do in our business districts. This is everything from direct assistance to our groups, like the sidewalk sales program, planning activities, our avenues of hope storefront facade program that's coming up in 2022, as well as training and technical assistance for our business district groups. Any of the help that, that we can provide to them in solving the issues that they, they have in their business districts. Next slide. So over the past two years, we've run the sidewalk sales program. And this is actually a pretty small program. We, in terms of the, the money that's been spent, we have given grants ranging from $1,500 to $3,000 to our business district organizations throughout the city to help their businesses operate safely during, during the pandemic, whether it's doing business outside or providing cleaning products and tips and activities to, to do business safely throughout the pandemic. We awarded 40 grants over two years. The total amount awarded was $78,500. We served 20 neighborhoods, but I think the key here, we served about 1,000 businesses with this program because of the reach that our business district groups in, has in helping their, the businesses within their neighborhood. Next slide, please. So this one is a program that, that we are starting in 2022, which is our avenues of hope storefront facade grant. This grant is similar to our previous storefront renovation program that you all know that we had until a couple of years ago. This has a little bit larger grant though. The grant amount is up to $12,000 for business and property owners within our avenues of hope corridors. Obviously, it will be for rehab and restoration of the, the facades of the building. But we also will allow up to 25% of the, of the money will be able to be used for interior renovations. And up to 50% of the funds can be used for ADA improvements. And that's anything from railings and, and removing the step at the, in the front of putting in a ramp or even making some bathroom improvements on the inside of the, of the business. And obviously it's for businesses and property owners in our avenues of hope corridors. We're looking to start this program in January of 2022. Next slide. And the last point that I'll be talking about is our business assistance and development. This is really the work that we do directly with small businesses that is not our lending. So it's technical assistance, it's creating programs that will help our businesses with, support them in the growth of their businesses. We really support minority and women-owned business through this as well as business acceleration. We estimate that we've impacted about 2,000 businesses over the last year in this program. Next slide, please. So just as some examples, a couple of examples of the work that we're doing in this. One is our, is Catapult Greater Pittsburgh. We have supported Catapult since 2018 with the Startup to Storefront program. This, we've helped nearly around 50 minority and women-owned businesses. These are retail businesses. They've gone through the 12-month entrepreneurship cohort. We opened the gallery on Penn with Catapult in 2018. And the gallery on Center, on Center Avenue is slated to open in 2022. But also as a result of our support, the Catapult Greater Pittsburgh has created two other programs that are helping small businesses throughout the city. One is Catapult Culinary. So currently the first cohort is 15 minority and, and women-owned food-based businesses that just the summer began a 12, 12-month cohort. They have very strong partnerships with Giant Eagle and with Food 21. And are also, some of the businesses are working in Fulton Commons, which is also a URA client in using their commercial kitchen space. And the last is possibly my favorite, which is the Catapult Kids Program. This is a cohort for youth entrepreneurs. In 2021, five youth entrepreneurs completed the program. And with all of these, these programs, there will be additional cohorts in 2022 as well. Next slide, please. So the other, the example of business assistance that we, that we provide is our Get Online, Grow Online program. This is a program that was, we, we, working with, with neighborhood allies. We came up with this in mid-2020 to help businesses kind of pivot to an online program to be able to keep their businesses going in some cases. We've served since then 150 businesses, 90% of them have been MWBE businesses. We've used nine local e-commerce technical assistance providers. And just a couple of examples there on, on screen. One is, on top is Flavors Famous Street Food. He basically utilized social media and, and online advertising and increased his business exponentially over the course of the, the pandemic. And the other is Hilltop Pharmacy. Hilltop Pharmacy used this, this program to increase their online capacity. And they launched a scheduling and intake system that then enabled them to host large COVID vaccination clinics. They were right on, right in front of, of the COVID vaccination program in early 2021, especially with the senior citizen population in the Hilltop communities. Next slide, please. And now I'm turning it over to Shana to talk about our housing programs.
Thanks, Josette. The housing lending team is requesting $6 million in home and CDBG funds to support our consumer residential lending programs. We'll start first with the Home Accessibility Program for Independents, otherwise known as HAP. Next slide, please. HAP provides grants to homeowners and renters who are elderly or have permanent disabilities to make accessibility modifications to their homes. We are requesting $500,000 in CDBG funds for this program. Grants of $10,000 are available to homeowners and renters may receive up to $5,000 with landlord approval. The program is essential in helping Pittsburgh residents age in place and avoid potential displacement. Demand is consistently high. These services help residents avoid transitions to nursing homes or senior housing, retain their equity in their homes and stabilize communities. Next slide, please. The most common modification requests are wheelchair ramps, chair gliders and bathroom modifications. The requested funding will help a maximum of 50 residents age in place and increase their quality of home. Next slide. The homeowner assistance program, otherwise known as HAP. The homeowner assistance program, otherwise known as HAPPI. Next slide. Uh, the HAPPI provides up to thirty thousand dollars of financing to homeowners at or below eighty percent A M I to make necessary and critical repairs to the home. We are requesting one point one million dollars in C D B G funds for this program. The program has completed over a hundred and thirty home repairs to date and constantly has an extremely high demand for services. This program is critical in addressing code violations, health and safety hazards, and structural deficiencies. Current housing opportunity fund allocations are not sufficient to keep up with the demand that continues to increase year after year through this program. Next slide. As you can see here, Ms. Cox, a Larmour resident, uh, received repairs on her roof through this program. And, um, in, uh, investments like this really can be life-changing for our neighbors. And, uh, we, we, we get a lot of gratitude from the homeowners that we work with. Next slide. Next up is the Affordable For Sale Program. Uh, the Affordable For Sale Line Item Funds are For Sale Development Program, otherwise known as F S D P. F S D P is used to help fund the creation of new affordable housing and/or preserve existing affordable housing for homeownership in the city. We are requesting nine hundred thousand dollars in C D B G funds and two hundred in home funds to support this program. Properties financed under F S D P must be sold to homebuyers at or below eighty percent of the area median income. And funds can be used for both hard and soft costs associated with the rehab and new constructions of this, of these units. Maximum, uh, F S D B funding is seventy thousand dollars per rehabilitated unit and up to one hundred thousand dollars per new construction unit. Next slide. Here are a few examples of our more recent investments. You can see a before and after, however, the picture is a little warped for the Upper Hill District image. Uh, but you'll see a home in Hazelwood, Garfield, and Upper Hill. And all of these homes, uh, were sold between eighty-five and one hundred and eighty thousand dollars to homebuyers at eighty percent area of median income or less. Uh, acknowledging that the sale price that I have listed here, in addition to that, the U R A provided a deferred second deferred mortgage to further reduce the sale price to the homebuyer to ensure long-term affordability and, um, for the homebuyer. Next slide. Next line item is the Affordable Rental Development and Preservation. We are requesting one point five million in C D B G funds and one point eight million in home funds to support our rental gap program. This program provides soft gap financing for affordable rental developments with four more units. Creation of affordable rental housing means the new construction or rehabilitation of existing rental units at thirty, fifty, and sixty percent of the area median income. Ours must agree to affordability restrictions on the properties for at least forty years. The two thousand and twenty-two C D B G and home requested funds will primarily support two thousand and twenty-two nine percent loan come housing tax credit developments. Next slide. And here are a few examples of our more recent R G P developments that were, that utilized C D B G and home funds. On the top right, you'll see the New Granada Square Apartments in the Hill District. And on the bottom, uh, that is Harvard Beatty and East Liberty. Both nine percent loan come housing tax credits. And with that, I will hand this presentation over to Joe Karlovitz, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Shana. Uh, I will wrap this presentation with the personnel line items from, uh, the two thousand and twenty-two, uh, budget. If you want to move to the next one, Daniel, thank you. Um, this represents eight percent of the total C D B G allocation and ten percent of the home allocation. Um, our current, uh, staffing as of November fifteenth is a hundred and six employees. Uh, this equates to roughly seven of our staff. And as my colleagues have just went through, um, you know, we do a lot of different projects across the entire city and all counts of districts and across those five major economic development goals. Um, we fund this, our operations, uh, about thirty percent from non-revenue generating items such as this allocation of C D G, C D B G and HOFF, as well as programming come from prior years. Um, and the remainder is made through different revenue generating programs and, and policies and that we continue to can, uh, adhere to, such as our lending practices, um, as well as our rentals and licensing and sales of proceeds, as well as our, uh, investments. Um, with that, uh, thank you to everyone who presented quickly. I know that was very tough and I will turn it back over to Greg for final remarks.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, hopefully we got that, uh, through that without too much pain. Uh, I think we came in about five minutes shy of the forty-five minute uh, time allotment we, uh, we set at the outset. Uh, again, appreciate your attention to this, um, and the support that you have demonstrated to us in years past. Um, and I guess with that, we'll open it up.
Thank you, Mr. Flotstrom. Thank you all for that presentation. And, um, I see a number of, um, members on, um, Zoom. And I'm wondering if there are any members in chambers.
There is just one, Councilwoman Gross, Anthony Coghill.
Oh, Mr. Coghill, you're there. And I also see for the record, um, Councilman Wilson, uh, in the Zoom. Councilman Lovell, um, Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilman Burgess. And I believe if I was, uh, I think we still have Councilman Smith, um, watching online, but not online with us. So, um, if you'll mind, I'll just start at the top with Councilman Coghill and Chambers. Um, and then I'll just work down my participant list. I think we were all here at the same time.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome to all from the U R A. I don't want to begin to try to name you all, but welcome to everybody. Um, so I'll just keep it real brief, you know, I, um, originally, I mean, it's a lot to digest. I know you have your hands in a lot of different pots here, a lot of different projects. But Shana, I guess, uh, this question is probably directed to you. Um, the Home Accessibility Program that we offer, uh, up to thirty thousand dollars. My question is this, and, and I think I know the answer to this. We provide the loan. The folks who own the house, um, there will, then, they're not responsible for paying it back initially. When that property is sold someday to, whether it be another family member or whomever, then we are to collect on that loan. Is that correct?
Yeah, let me just clarify, uh, some of the information that you just stated. The Home Accessibility Program is up to ten thousand dollars in the form of a grant. But the homeowner assistance program is the program that provides financing up to thirty thousand dollars to make modifications to a home. Uh, and the way that the program is structured is, um, for homeowners that are below fifty percent of the area median income, their loans up to thirty thousand dollars are in the form of a deferred loan. And so there is no payment on that loan for the first ten years. And then beginning in year ten through twenty, the loan is forgiven at a percentage of ten. Well, it's, it's forgiven for the rest of the life of the term while the homeowner is living there. Um, for the homeowner assistance program, there is, that program targets homeowners between fifty percent and eighty percent of the area median income. A portion of the loan is deferred and forgiven, and a portion of it is, uh, repaid. So there are some nuances to the program depending on what A M I level the homeowner is at. Uh, but, uh, the majority of the loans that we provide are deferred over the life of the loan. Deferred and forgiven.
Right, so, so Shana, when you say deferred and forgiven, so say we give a thirty thousand dollar loan to a property owner. And ten years from now, that's when we start asking for payment, but not requiring it. Correct so far?
No payment is triggered at year ten, but at year ten is when loan forgiveness starts for the remainder of the life of the loan.
So I guess my question is if we're loaning thirty thousand dollars. And I understand that the spirit of it, of course, is to keep people in their homes and to fix their roofs and things like that. I guess, why do we not collect that money at some point when that house is sold, say, a generation or generations? And, and correct me if I'm wrong, it goes generationally. So if somebody who had applied and received that thirty thousand dollars after twenty years, if their child or somebody in the family purchased the ha- or the house stays in the family, um, we don't ask for that money back until someday they do decide to sell that home. And what I'm asking, I guess, is at that someday, do we then require our thirty thousand dollars back?
We do not, um, it, it, it's really the spirit of the program is to invest in our homeowner's home so that they can stay in quality, uh, and safe environments, but also help them continue to, uh, grow equity and wealth for their families.
Yeah, and I understand that, but it's really not a loan then, is it?
It's a loan that's forgiven over time.
Right.
And that loan, that loan structure allows, um, yeah, allows us to continue to engage with the homeowner and track, um, where it's at. But you're correct, uh, the spirit is more of forgiveness-based than repayment.
Sure, okay, so we call it a loan, but essentially it's really not a loan. It's, you know, um, so, okay, that's, that's fine on that. Um, the other thing was, and we have not touched on this, I know the ARPA funds that are being allocated to, you know, to the U R A was in, and forgive me for not knowing the number, but how much was it that we will be allocating to the U R A from the recent ARPA funds?
About seventy-five million dollars.
I'm sorry, Damonte, say that again.
Seventy-five million.
Seventy-five million dollars. Okay, so my question is, where do you begin to even think about, like, what are we going to do with that money? Do you have that many projects, that many things where you can invest seventy-five million dollars? Or is it something we're just going to house? Are we going to invest a portion of it? I guess my, my question is, where do you begin with seventy-five million dollars as to what you use it for?
Well, we've, uh, I'll take this one. We've designed a, a, a number of new programs, complete own P G H, which is focused on, uh, you know, affordable homeownership. Um, there's a, a large, uh, um, uh, commitment to funding at long last the land bank, which has not been heretofore funded. So this gives us an opportunity to fund an organization that historically has not been funded. Um, and the, the remainder of, of the large, large part of the remainder of it is to basically help launch additional programs that we believe we have a pipeline to help fund, including, uh, things like energy efficiency, uh, funding, the community land trust, City Bridges Community Land Trust. So, yeah, I, I don't think we're going to have a hard time, uh, deploying the funds. And, uh, and to answer your question, none of it's going to go into, uh, a U R A bank account. It's going to be, it's going to be spent, and it has to be spent within a three-year window as, uh, promulgated by the Fed. So, uh, yes, we, it is a lot of money, but we have it programmed. And we believe we can push the money out and push it out responsibly and in a manner that is complying to our mission and what we've been asked to do, uh, by the city.
Okay, yeah, that Greg, that was, uh, my question. So we have three years to allocate that money, not spend it, allocate it or spend it.
You have until the end of, uh, two thousand and twenty-four for it to be obligated, and then it must be spent by the end of two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay, okay, that was, that was really my, you know, my biggest question. Don't get me wrong, you know, seventy-five million dollars, we can do a lot with that, and I'm sure you have a lot of ideas. But my question was, you know, it's not easy to spend seventy-five million dollars. We could throw it at this and that, but, um, to do it responsibly, I would think takes a lot of planning and a lot of insight and a lot of meetings back and forth as to what projects we put this into. So just wanted to make sure you had a plan for it. Um, I assumed you did. That's it for me, Madam Chair, I thank you, and, um, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Coghill. Next we'll have, um, Councilman Wilson and then Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chair. I wanted to, um, ask a couple of questions. One, I think they're both a two-part question. The first one is just related to the land bank and how you do your long-term relationship with the land bank. Uh, and then specifically, uh, the part I'm curious about is a, um, stabilization of structures. So for instance, there is some thought that, um, you know, amongst the, the board and, and, you know, with, um, with the managers there, that there will be, um, funds set aside to stabilize properties. And I'm curious if there is a way, um, that you all view that, um, so with that said, you know, just your long-term relationship and also specifically the, specifically the, um, structure stabilization.
So that's an excellent question, uh, Director Wilson. So, uh, part of, so you do, you did not see an ask specifically for the land bank in this particular capital budget ask. It was not included in the, the budget that was approved by the mayor's office. Um, however, it is our position that, um, that the capital budget should include and incorporate an allocation for the Pittsburgh Land Bank, uh, you know, in the years to come. Although we received a ten million dollar allocation from ARPA, as we, uh, just discussed, that money is finite and it has to be spent by a certain, you know, it, within a certain time period. The prioritization will be the acquisition, stabilization, and stewardship of tax delinquent properties and to rapidly clear title and remove lien from that property. And that is how the ARPA dollars will be used. We believe that an augmentation from the capital budget would further support, uh, being able to, uh, help these properties move to the disposition process, as well as help with some conservatorship assistance and some other critical needs around, uh, the Pittsburgh Land Bank. So the focus is definitely on being able to acquire and clear title on those, those properties.
Okay, so am I hearing you correctly? You're saying that the focus of land, the land bank is to acquire and clear title and move the properties. But there is an interest of the U R A, not the land bank, but the U R A specifically, to, um, help assist with the structure stabilization.
Yes, I, I think that the land bank and what we've seen around the country is that having the support of a redevelopment authority and the heft and the might of the U R A will make the, the land bank that much more effective. That is one of the reasons why, uh, in two thousand and twenty-one, the land bank became an affiliate of the U R A to be able to take advantage of some of those backend supports and keep the overhead costs of the land bank relatively low so that most of the focus goes on, goes to the actual structures and being able to, to reduce the blight that's currently plaguing our city. So yes, you, you have that correct. We believe that there's a long, long-term relationship between the P L B and the U R A and that they should be complementary to one another in that, you know, not every project or not every, uh, parcel will be suitable for a U R A development. And we can leverage the land bank to become sort of a first front door for, uh, land recycling in the city to reduce some of our dysfunction that we see between, uh, these three, these three coordinated bodies, the city, the P L B, and the U R A.
Okay, all right. Um, my other question had to do with the, uh, home ARPA funds. And, um, so I was paying attention to the slides where I believe it was like a mixture of C D B G and also, um, home funds. So we recently have a bill in council that is, you know, setting us up to authorize, uh, to be able to sign the agreement with Hut so that we can start accessing these funds, it's my understanding. And that's eight point three million dollars. I just want to make sure we're talking the same money.
A great question. The home A R P funds that you're talking about is a separate pool of home funds, uh, in addition to the annual allocation that the city receives. So they're both home dollars, but the home A R P funds are awarded to the city due to the stimulus packaging. Uh, so the home A R P funds really have a focus on homeless prevention. And my understanding is that O M B is going through an analysis of how to expend and disperse those dollars. So what I'm requesting for you to support our For Sale Development and our Rental Gap Program is different than that. is different than that, um, legislation that you're referencing.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for that clarity. I just, the term home has been used a couple of times. I just wanted to make sure we're talking about the same. Cause that, those are strict, those, this is a very, uh, targeted population for the ones that I'm talking about. So I just, just wanna clarify that. Thanks. Um. So that takes care of that. I did have a general question about C D G funding and, 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 you know, it seems like there is this, this separate C D B G process that happens on your side. I mean, are there any duplicate services that we or tasks that we're doing, since we have a, an office, you know, with me and and David Hutchinson work closely with, you know, making sure those C D G funds are, uh, being used appropriately? I mean, is there a whole separate office in the U R A? And like, what's, can you just explain that?
So there's no duplication of services. I, I think it's, there's a complementation to the O M B function that nests within our finance and compliance department. And so the city is essentially the PJ or the primary jurisdiction to receive those C D B G dollars, and they have to ensure that the dollars that are being deployed to the U R A are done in a compliant manner. So we work in a coordinated manner, meeting weekly to talk through priorities and projects and any timeliness issues that might occur to make sure that we are being responsible stewards in up, up, upholding the PJ's obligation to, um, to HUD. Joe Karlovitz, our Director of Finance, is on the call and can, uh, you know, add any color to that that I may not have, um, covered there.
I think you captured it well. We have a number of staff who work on C D B G, um, almost a hundred percent, but, um, it is not in competition with O M B, we work in, together with them.
So do they view you as just like another nonprofit that they would work with? They, you know?
Um, I think probably a little higher than that. We're a sub-recipient of their funds, um, and a large sub-recipient. So we have the timeliness requirements, as Dr. Walker mentioned, as well as all of the spending requirements that are governed by HUD. Um, so really more in a partnership with them, uh, probably than some of the smaller sub- recipients, but essentially the same. Uh, that's all governed through the co-op that we do send through council for approval and explains kind of the process that we follow, which does include O M B having prior approval of our programs and, and projects before we go forward with our, uh, any C D B G dollars.
Okay. That makes me think of another question, which is, uh, you know, this reminds me of like a vehicle to, to spend the funds and, um, can, can someone on, on the line explain how much funding that um, the U R A, uh, asks for homeless shelters, like as a vehicle to fund, uh, homeless shelters in the city of Pittsburgh?
I think that is primarily funneled through D H S, but we do, we did have a complimentary program by way of the housing stabilization program. But Shane, I'm gonna punt that one to you, um, cause you may have a more granular number available.
Yeah, it's an interesting question. Our rental gap program has supported single ro- single-room occupancy buildings like Wood Street Commons, Center of Y. Um, and then as Dr. Diamante referenced, our H S P program, which is our eviction prevention program, which provides, uh, up to three months worth of funding to renters or homeowners to help pay for utilities or mortgage assistance or rent assistance. Um, but we do not have a specific targeted program for homeless programming. That would be more in D H S's, um, area, but when, with the home A R P funds that you referenced, we will see a significant increase in investment in those, um, demographics.
Okay, so S R Os, but not, uh, shelters. Okay. I just wanted to understand that more clearly. Thanks. I'll have any further questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Councilman Strasburger, you ready?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Oh, again, thank you to everyone at the U R A for all you do. Um, I think I said this at the, at city planning as well. I don't think most residents of the city of Pittsburgh or business owners or visitors understand the breadth of the U R A's responsibilities and all that impact that you make. So, um, I just, on behalf of them, wanna say thank you for all that you do, for residents, business owners, and more. My general question is around coordination with the city and city planning in the city of Pittsburgh as we, as you work to do everything you can to, um, to implement policies, but also just like allocate the funding necessary to increase affordable housing and housing in general, but you know, mixed, mixed income and affordable housing across the city. I, I, Diamante, I think it was you who actually educated me that it was necessary not only to have the funding there and to build the buildings and to build the housing, but also to have the policies that enable that to happen and make that more ex- uh, efficient, um, lower costs, um, and that, you know, cities like Atlanta are doing what they're doing, not just because of the funding that's allocated, but also the policies in place. My question is, as the planning department continues to march forward on their comprehensive plan, um, and is making some zoning, uh, policy changes, um, recommendations to council, but will likely recommend more to council and to the mayor's office soon. Are you in contact with them? Are you working with them to help to understand or to recommend the types of policies that you believe would be helpful? To further your, you know, yours and our shared goal when it comes to housing?
Uh, yeah, definitely. I, I'll answer that by saying, um, I'm a planner by training. So, um, planner who's turned to, to be an economic development, redevelopment professional. So, um, yeah, we have, I think Nick Fedorx on the phone. We have weekly or bi-weekly meetings with Department of City Planning to coordinate activities, and Nick is, uh, very much involved, and other staff are very much involved as well as I in, in those meetings. So, uh, we do, you know, have an understanding of where the priorities are, where the city is doing comprehensive plans. We talked early on, um, pretty, uh, pretty frequently about linking our avenues of hope work to the city's comprehensive plan to make sure that they were uh, working i- in sync, uh, and that we were leveraging the maximum amount of resources we possibly could into the avenues. But uh, yeah, I would think I'll turn over to Nick to talk a little bit about, more about that. But yeah, Nick is very involved with the Department of City Planning and who's, Nick is also a planner. So Nick?
Thanks, Greg. I am also a planner. I love planning. Um, and I'm the primary liaison between the U R A and Department of City Planning. So, uh, yeah, everything that Greg said is, uh, completely accurate. You know, we collaborate a lot. You know, uh, on the upcoming, you know, we just heard city planning's presentation, some of the projects that, you know, they're implementing, for instance, the inclusionary zoning overlays that they're looking to implement, uh, the housing needs assessment, which is a major endeavor that they'll need some U R A data, uh, to actually implement properly. You know, we're collaborating on that. You know, and like Greg said, the community outreach, especially with our avenues of hope program, is a, um, huge collaboration with city planning. So we are really locked up. Whenever there's a neighborhood plan, there's a U R A representative on that steering committee, um, usually on the development portion. And then in turn, we, uh, engage with the neighborhood planners at city planning, um, pretty much every time we issue an R F P for redevelopment proposal in our neighborhoods and involve them, you know, at the inception of the R F P, all the way to the implementation, just to get their feedback, uh, to get their perspective as the community expert, um, and to get their perspective as a planner. So, um, that's a great question. Thank you.
Thank you. So that, I mean, I'm glad those conversations are happening. Are you talking about, are you having conversations about the types of policies that the city would need to pass to help further the efforts around and lower the costs around building new or preserving naturally occurring affordable housing?
Absolutely. Um, yeah, actually, come, prior to working at the U R A, I was a consultant. I worked on the original housing needs assessment, um, that was conducted. One of the primary researchers. So I, I, I know that, uh, study very well, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing that updated. We will absolutely be working with them. You know, we bring the kind of development perspective, uh, into the planning process. Uh, and so, you know, I think by collaborating, we get a much deeper project that's also implementable, especially in terms of naturally according affordable housing, in terms of workforce housing, you know, in terms of that kind of missing middle housing that we've been hearing a lot about.
Should mention too, that on the housing side, uh, yeah, conversations are happening. We will fully admit that, that more of them need to happen. Um, one link between, uh, uh, our organization and the city's Department of City Planning, uh, we both work with H R and A Consulting, and H R and A is currently working on the city's housing element of the comp plan. And on the other side of that, H R and A is working with us to make sure that our arsenal of programs uh, link with, sync with what may be needed from a housing, um, from housing policy standpoint, to make sure that they're connected. But, uh, a lot of us here at the U R A have a, a professional interest, a deep one, in affordable housing, and we realize it's something we can't subsidize our way out of. There needs to be a whole, a whole, uh, you know, arsenal of programs that, uh, that apply to affordable, uh, housing affordability. Needs to be a full court press. It can't be a handful of subsidy programs, involves zoning permitting, yes, subsidies, land development, land clearance. So these are conversations that we wanna have more of with the city planning department.
That's great. Thank you all. Uh, my, my second and last question is really, um, more of a lack of understanding of, of paperwork or administrative item, um, that might be bigger than just that, but, um, not sure who's appropriate, the appropriate person to answer, whether that's, um, council budget office or U R A. The Housing Opportunity Fund, ten million dollars transferring from Department of Finance's budget to the five-year plan, um, is it's similar to the pay-go transfer to the capital budget? I don't know if I had to step away when that was being explained or if it was explained at all. Can someone explain that to me?
Yeah, maybe that should be me since I confused you with that note. Sorry about that.
No, don't be sorry. I'm curious. Thank you.
Uh, we haven't covered the Housing Opportunity Fund yet, but to skip ahead and get to that, it's, it's the same as it always has. We just moved it out of the finance department. Cause it's, it doesn't really, it's not reflected in what the Department of Finance does, and we moved it forward into the, um, front of the budget where there's also the tran- larger transfers, like the transfer of the capital fund, the transfer to the early childhood, um, fund, and I think a couple other large transfers have lived there over the years. So, that's why we moved it.
Okay, thank you, and sorry for, for skipping ahead, but I appreciate the explanation. All right, that's extended my questions. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman. Is, uh, Councilman Burgess still with us? Councilman, do you have any questions for the U R A? See you in the Zoom list. I don't hear you. I will, um, ask a few questions. Oh, there you are. I was just gonna stall for time. Go ahead.
Um, I don't have any, any questions, really. I just want to thank Greg and Diamante and the U R A staff. I work very closely with them, have worked very close with them and stuff in our district. Um, one of the things, though, I, I will say, and I think having done multiple planning processes, simply adding a planner or two to any department will not make it more able to do comprehensive community planning, right? There are multiple elements that one would have to do, and if you wanted to not use consultants to do comprehensive community planning, you would have to intentionally add a number of staff, not just community planners. You'd have to, you'd have to hire a multitude of experts in various areas to, to replicate um, what you can get by hiring consultants. We don't just hire them, um, because we want to. It, it is, it is not as easy as you think. It takes multiple expertise that if you had on staff, uh, would be very expensive. And so we're not hiring two or three, you know, community planners will not give you the capacity to do comprehensive community planning on the neighborhood level. It would take multiple, multiple, um, investments in employees to replicate that kind of strength. Um, um, but I do think, I do think, I do think, um, that what we can do as council, and I'll, I'll stay with council, um, I do think, and I, I, I'm, I'm going to stay locked up with with Ms. Strasburger on that. I think we can, we can play an important part in public engagement, right? Um, public engagement has always been a council prerogative, something that we did actually, um, maybe fifteen, twenty years ago. It was, um, even more central to, to our work than now. And so I think that, that I'll stay with that part of it. But anyway, U R A, you do a great job. I'm a fan of Greg and Diamante's, obviously. I look forward to the avenues of hope implementation and Homewood Avenue and all the other stuff that, that we're doing. So that's a comment with no questions, um, and look forward to working with you in the new year.
Thank you, Councilman. I'll just ask a few questions, cause I, it's been, it has been, we're going on now about our third or fourth hour into this hearing. Um, that, uh, Councilwoman Smith was asking me questions that I couldn't answer, and that was uh, this, in the budget numbers that you presented in your, your slideshow, uh, we saw about twelve million dollars for payroll. And then we also were looking at the requested funds from capital funds and C D B G funds. And it wasn't obvious to me which of those funds were, um, from which sources and for which uses. So is that ten million dollars for direct investments in the lending and in the subsidy? Someone cut that off. Thank you so much. Um, I think even our, even our-
Fourth of July.
Division Department is getting a little tired at the wheel here.
Classy Zoom bombing.
So, um, if you could just recap for me, like, kind of like, which are the, which are the funds that are going towards payroll? And then which of the funds are, are, are the funds that are going into the lending, going into the small businesses, et cetera, so that, you know, we don't really see a balance sheet here, but maybe that's what I'm, I'm asking about, or what are the funds that you're asking for that are direct investments?
Out of the six point nine million, or, I'm sorry, out of the nine point six million dollars, seven hundred and seventy-seven is toward the payroll, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
So what is the other, where is the other eleven point three million dollars for payroll coming from?
Um, the, it roughly comes from seventy percent of revenue generating pro- programs and services that we do, whether it's our lending, um, whether it's our property that we lease or rent, or we sell property, um, investments we make. Um, our finances or our balance sheet and, uh, and financial statements are available on our website. I'm happy to kind of dig in a little more and provide counsel a little bit further of analysis on that number.
Okay, so the amounts that are being requested in this budget really is, um, almost entirely, so like ninety percent of it is going into the direct investments.
That's correct.
Saying it. Okay, that, thank you. And if I may, one of the, one of my favorite projects, I, I just wanted the chance to get someone to either reiterate or highlight about, which is that, um, you know, council provided funds for childcare, um, lending. That little pot hasn't actually been expended, but it did leverage an additional one and a half billion dollars, if I'm recalling from last year of funding for, uh, from P N C. Uh, plus, even right before COVID hit, we were working together at the beginning of twenty twenty to, um, you were kind of filling out what your program was gonna look like, what the lending guidelines would look like. And then I think you've actually started some of the business training classes based on the manual that I dusted off from my basement and gave you from the nineteen nineties on how to start or expand your childcare facility. So I would love to get a short update on that program.
Absolutely. So you are correct. Um, your dollars helped us to leverage and raise additional dollars for childcare, so thank you for that. We have successfully completed a first cohort of classes with, in partnership with Chatham University. They did run two classes, one for existing childcare providers and one for new childcare providers. Immensely successful. We had more applications and slots, and so there will be a second, uh, round of each of those classes that will be starting in the next semester. Um, so we're super excited about that. We do have a forgivable childcare loan that was launched. And we fund up to thirty thousand dollars in, uh, between, I'm sorry, up to twenty thousand dollars in a forgivable loan for childcare providers who need, you know, dollars for either helping to get to the next star level certifications, you know, making sure the space meets the criteria, working capital to help get people on board to get to that second, third, or fourth star. So that has- get people on board to get to that second, third or fourth star. So that has been successful and we've put out numerous forgivable loans across the city to date. We still have money in that program and will be continuing to run it until it is totally expended. We'll be also working with trying together on the shared services pilot, which your money is helping to support. And that should be launching in the next two to three months. We are just tweaking it a bit, making sure that it's as valuable as possible. And we do already have pilot childcare providers that are ready to go into that program. And so really what we've been able to create with your support is a full circle opportunity of education, technical support and financing.
Well, I'm so glad to hear that. It's been a long time coming. It was certainly timely, but it was needed anyway. But we know how greatly the, the COVID has exacerbated people's issues around childcare, both for the childcare operators, but also the families that are depending on childcare. And we know that these are businesses that are almost entirely women-owned businesses. We know that especially some of these businesses that are micro businesses are deep in the hearts of neighborhoods and our neighborhood serving businesses. So I'm always really enthusiastic and thank you for that work. So I'm just trying to gauge time. We're about at 20 minutes till five. And we have not yet started on housing opportunity fund nor land bank. And we have members still with us. And I'm just wondering how much time you had budgeted for each one of those, or who is even here to speak to that?
Yeah, Councilmember Gross, we can pull up the H O F's annual allocation plan, which was in front of council a few weeks ago. If you like to walk through that again, and I, I know there are members of the public tuning in today that might not have been tuned in during that discussion a few weeks ago. So we can pull that up and then I don't think we have much to present on for the Pittsburgh land bank. I did not receive proposed funding in the mayor's budget. And I believe the land bank board is still discussing exactly how they want to budget and allocate the ARPA funding, which will also be subject to sort of O M B and city law approval. So there just isn't much to discuss there yet. So we can pull up the H O F annual allocation plan though.
Fair enough. Do you know how long that presentation takes?
I think Shana can walk through what the allocation plan is in a matter of minutes.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Let's do that next. Appreciate it.
Sure. And can folks see the annual allocation plan for 2022 on my screen?
We can see it.
All right, I'll turn it over to Shana.
Great. Thank you, David. Here you can see our 10 million allocation plan for 2022 is presented recently and you'll see, we'll just take a million dollars at the bottom for administration. And then we can look at the programs up above that implement the affordable housing priorities of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Committee. Number of these programs will look familiar because I went over them in the earlier presentation for the capital budget. Some of our programs are multi-sourced by Housing Opportunity Fund, C D B G and Home. Specifically, that would be the rental gap program. A total of $3.8 million is to fund gap financing for affordable rental development and preservation. You'll see the A M I breakdown between 30 and 50% in the center columns. Next up is the Housing Stabilization Program. And this is our program to help evict, excuse me, to help prevent evictions for homeowners and renters within the city. It's really a short-term support system for up to three months. For $3,000 for renters and $6,000 for homeowners. And those funds can support move-in assistance for some last month's rent, security deposits, utility arrears and upcoming rent arrears, mortgage assistance, and then of course, legal assistance. That line item totals 525,000. Down payment assistance, D P C C A P. This helps our first-time home buyers. The program supports our home buyers through funding at the closing and purchase of a home. There are two levels of this purchase. It's of this funding. It's 5,7500 to support our first-time buyers that meet our income requirements. And you'll see there's $700,000 to that program. Homeowner Assistant Program. This is the same program I talked about earlier that is being funded or being requested to fund, be funded by C D B G. This is for homeowners to help make repairs to the homes that they currently live in. Predominantly structured as a deferred forgivable loan, but there are portions of it that are amortizing depending on your A M I level. For-sale Development Program has a funding amount of $950,000. Again, this supports the development of housing to be sold to future home buyers at 80% A M I or less. Legal Assistance Program. This program helps tenants and homeowners to address legal issues that they're having associated with their housing situation, whether it is rental or homeownership. That program is funded in the amount of 450,000. And then the Small Landlord Fund, this is a new program that the Housing Opportunity Fund is looking to fund. It is supporting smaller landlords within the city. And in exchange for the, the funds, the landlords must commit to either accept housing choice voucher holders as tenants or rent their units to tenants at 80% A M I or less. And so that program is funded at 425,000. That program does have a deed restriction similar to our rental gap and our for-sale development program. The deed restriction is 10 years. And, and we're seeing a, an uptick in this, in interest from our smaller landlords over the last year since it was rolled out with internal funds that we have at the U R A. We wanted to test the waters and see if there was interest in the program. Started off slow and now that word is out about this program, we're getting a lot of interest. So we requested funding from the Housing Opportunity Fund to support it. So that's what the allocation plan looks like, $10 million.
Thank you. Is that it?
It is.
Wonderful. You can take down the shared screen. And I'm going to ask if, again, once again, if there's anyone left in chambers, because I can't really see into chambers. And if not, it looks like we still have Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilman Burgess. So no one in chambers? So I'll hand it over. Since I've been going to Councilwoman Strasburger first and making Councilman Burgess wait, Councilman Burgess, let me allow you to go first. Not sure if he's still in front of the screen. It's hard on these long, I'm sure people at home can relate when you've been in front of your Zoom screen for many hours at a time. Just like when we're in chambers, sometimes you have to step away from the table. So Councilwoman Strasburger, if you're there, do you have any questions? Like we lost both of them. It's been a very long day. I will just say to the, the H O F allocations that I've been really appreciated, appreciative of, of course, the work to keep people in their homes. I see that you have a kind of collaborative thing here with stabilizing currently existing affordable housing. I, I saw that also in the U R A presentation. And so I'm really kind of wondering if that was the same numbers or were those different numbers? Because I believe that when we voted to create the Housing Opportunity Fund and when we had lots of testimony in the year to structure that piece of legislation. While we do need to create new housing, it is the most expensive, slowest way to house people. And that we have an opportunity, but also an obligation to stabilize currently affordable housing, but also bring it up to code, right? And so this really dovetails for us as members with the work that we've been doing around the lead ordinance around the newspaper articles that so many of us have seen about substandard housing and really deplorable conditions in both publicly owned and privately owned housing. So I just wanted to let you speak to that for a moment. Whoever wants to jump in on that, that was kind of a question about, is there two separate pots of stabilizing affordable housing currently, you know, existing affordable housing and kind of what do you, what do you see as the opportunities there?
For stabilizing current housing, I think we see those investments through our housing, our homeownership assistance program hap. And so that was presented during the capital budget request earlier. It's also funded through the home, the Housing Opportunity Fund. Sorry, it's getting late in the day. And so that program is in such high demand and exactly what you're describing, it is so important to invest in our current homeowners to ensure that they are able to thrive and be supported as our city evolves and changes. Our rental gap program, which is also multi-sourced with Hoth and Home and C D B G is used and can be used to preserve current rental housing. And as we talk and think about the implementation of the home A R P, I'm, I'm sorry, the A R P funds. There is a new program coming out for, to be invested in the preservation of naturally occurring affordable housing and deed restricted housing to ensure that those units can continue to stay affordable and, and that they don't drop off into the private market. And we have to continue to invest in new housing at these pretty, with a huge price tag. So we're, we're, we're trying to address preservation of housing through our consumer programs and also through the development. Through R G P and future programs through the A R P funds. I'm not sure if I answered your question about the different
What I heard is that there's been a lot of dollars invested and work ongoing for homeowner occupied homeownership, but that we also have the need and maybe you've begun to develop out the programs for the renter occupied, like small property owners.
Exactly. We, we've always invested in the preservation of our affordable housing. Developers and landlords and owners can come to us and utilize the rental gap program to reinvest in current housing. Trying to think, the the, a lot of the developments that were created 15, 20 years ago are really coming up on their shelf life and needing reinvestment. So they, they are coming to us and looking to recapitalize and reinvest in their developments through four and nine percent deals. And so our R G P program is one tool that we use to help supplement the reinvestment in these programs. So our R G P can definitely be used for preservation of current affordable housing. And then we also have new programs coming out through A R P, right? We will be expanding that that, that priority and investment.
I'm going to say something that I've been saying now for nearly eight years. So it's not really directed at this, but I like to always, always say it when we talk about renters and rental units in the city of Pittsburgh is that while it's good that we look at extending the deed restrictions or, or bringing, you know, stabilizing the larger multi-units that have been restricted to affordable housing so that we don't lose, for example, like another Penn Plaza. There is such a huge portion of our constituents who are renters, who are not living in those big multi-units across the city and very many neighborhoods. They are living in apartments in single-family dwellings. And I've been saying that since we did the first Affordable Housing Task Force and since we did the year-long of testimony to create the Housing Opportunity Fund. And I have to continually remind ourselves of that and remind our public. Especially, you know, I have constituents who maybe moved here from San Francisco or Seattle where you don't have, you have more of a renter population living in obviously big rental apartments, units, big giant tall multi-units. And that isn't true in the city of Pittsburgh. There are neighborhoods of single-family homes that have 65, 70% renter populations. And that we also need in our policies and in our, in our programs to acknowledge that that's a section of renters that we also want to protect. We want to protect the affordability of some of those units. Well, again, being cognizant that they are 100-year-old dwellings. I want to say there's always a roof for a sewer, but there's also lead paint. There's also code violations that may be needing to be rectified. But it's an opportunity to engage those landlords to protect those rental units and protect affordability in the, in those kinds of neighborhoods. So it's been a long day though. So I'm going to give council members one more chance. And also I'd be, I'd be really happy to continue that part of the conversation because I do think this is another place where there's an intersection between not just having the dollars, but having the city policies that are conducive and complimentary. So that you'll get far more results to protect far more renters and rental units. I still see Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilman Burgess. I'll give them one more chance. If I don't hear from them, then I will call this meeting to recess and let us, let us all move on. But it's been a really thorough conversation. Really appreciate all of the work. And we will call this meeting to recess. Thank you all for being here. And we will, just heads up to the Cable Vision Department up there will be, will be signing off. Thank you all for your help today as well.